What our goals are, and let's keep it high level. And just for simplicity and clarification and everything, I'm sitting back. Jim is going to be calling on everybody, so don't look at me. All right. I guess it's up to you to review.
Okay. Good evening. Nice to see you all again. So do you all have two things? The agenda for tonight, which was the back half of the two-part agenda, so we're looking at obviously Tuesday night. And then you should also have something that I wrote up as a result of your discussion last night, which is just some possible priorities, just in the list, based on what I heard you say. And I kind of tried to leave it rough because we were just doing that brainstorming and discussion last night. So we'll use that to start with. But if you look at the agenda, our goal for the first session by about dinnertime is to talk about these potential priorities, maybe even relate them to the goals that you've adopted for 2016 and 17. And then by the time we get to dinner, hopefully you can say we have this agreement on budget priorities for the next biennium. And then after that, we'll talk a little bit about each one of those and what are the outcomes that you're seeking. And then we have a couple other things to do about before we tie up for the evening and talk a little bit about, you know, if walkways and waterways passes, what would the impact on the budget be? What are the impact of other significant issues or approaches? Like last night, you heard Chris talk a little bit about the public works. I'm forgetting the phrase, but assessment or services assessment?
Service analysis.
Service analysis, yeah. So that would be an example of the kinds of things that you're doing a little bit differently and what would be the impact of some of those initiatives on the budget. And then also talking a little bit about what do these priorities mean for your outreach to the public?
It worked really well last night. Everybody turned their phones off.
So anyway, that's the last section for the agenda. And I have a prediction we'll be out of here before nine o'clock. So we'll see. Rob said I'd get extra pay if I got you out of here. Anyway, so, but I'll donate it to Brian's department.
Well, that's the gentleman you should get out of here early.
Anyway, so. And I think probably also helps if you have the council goals and they are in the packet that the staff put together for you that we looked at last night. Yeah, we'll use the same ground rules as last night. Thank you. So we first wanted to talk a little bit about have you take a look at this list and build from it? And I guess I would just first ask as the agenda does, are there any additions to this list or anything that you want to remove? Or do you want to even say them a little bit differently, more like your council goals or in any other way? But this is what you had come up with last night.
I think you did a good job in capturing this.
Yeah. I think I had a little help too from Rob in terms of putting some of these things under groupings or headings.
I have one quick question. About inclusion of the lodge under, I understand that's a priority for the city. I question that as a budget priority though for the city. I mean, I get it's part of our vision there, but I just don't see us spending a ton of money on making that happen. I could be wrong. Are we talking about the St. Edward Lodge?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see us spending money on it, but time, yes.
Do you want to address that too, Lori?
Yeah, so, well, a couple of things. One is, so I guess when I looked at this draft priorities for the budget, I thought this is like areas to focus on during our budget discussions, areas that we're going to probably, you know, need to do some work on. And one that's, that sort of buried to me is the, it's really about the park maintenance, maintaining all our wonderful new capital improvements. And so that to me feels a little buried because it's just in the second line of the philosophy thing. And the second thing I would like to talk about as a council is on number five, the housing affordability and diversity. We have a, what does that look like in terms of a possible budget item? Because if the thought, right now what we're working on is a plan to just look at holistically and what we can do as a council.
I'm sorry, just a second. Do you have a copy of this for Milton? Okay, sorry. I guess we didn't make quite enough.
So I guess what would help me is, I know that not, you know, we didn't like vote on all these and all that. These were just sort of, you know, what people brought up. So what is it exactly? Are we looking at, you know, another general fund expenditure? I mean, what, what's the thought behind this? Because my, my personal opinion or what I believe is that we are looking at it in a more holistic process through the housing plan that we've already got in the works. It's not necessarily to me a budget item.
Stacy, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, kind of on the same lines. I feel like we kind of need to get the results from the planning commission work before we change anything huge budget-wise in that category, since we're looking at it quite deeply.
But I would, I mean, we discussed yesterday our contribution to Arch and such. I would hope that we would, I mean, that's a budget item that I would hope that we would keep on, on the budget going forward and let's hear something very drastically different from the planning commission as a suggestion.
So would you keep it as a priority, but because there is a funding element with Arch, are you kind of agreeing with Lori and Stacy that as long as there's the part of it that's budget for Arch, it doesn't need to be a priority?
I don't know. I think overall it's a, I mean, I could be wrong speaking for myself. I think it's a priority on the policy side, definitely. You know, what that looks like though, when we're done looking at it from the more holistic standpoint, I'm not sure what that looks like. But I think there still will be a budget component and I think it's something we're always going to end up discussing during budget. I mean, we'll be talking about this in November again, too. So for me, it's a budget priority. I'm not sure about everybody else.
So yeah, it's still a budget priority, but just, I wouldn't want to make any huge ginormous changes without hearing what the planning, planning commission has to do.
Is that still to come for you?
Yes.
When? Like sometime this year or is it more likely next year?
Actually Debbie maybe can answer that better than any of us.
The planning commission just started working on that as a work program item, so I'll know a little bit more in the next couple of months whether they'll have a recommendation to you in, that lines up neatly with your budget discussions. I'm not sure. If they have it to you, it would probably be in late October or November would be my guess.
So if I could just add to that, one of the reasons I, when I brought it, brought this up and trying to figure out on the budgeting, it was for me, it had less to do with what the amount is and more to do with having it be a consistent benchmark that we can maybe tie it to or relate it to. And it was with Rob having gone through the social services and we've had some decreases, which I thought were reasonable to bring us closer in line with our peer cities. I thought it would be nice to take the affordability side of that or to the Arch contribution and tie that to something as well so that we have some predictability for it. So that was, that was my thought on it as much as anything, because I think it is an important policy direction that we've, we've talked about, but we really haven't talked about what kind of a dollar commitment it deserves. And that would be a logical discussion after we've gotten feedback from the planning commission, I would think.
And I need to, I'll second Brent on that, I think, not only for our budgeting purposes,
but also for Arch's budgeting purposes. A couple of years ago, we slashed their funding by 40%, which makes it hard for them to predict what their funding sources are going to be. So if we can make their life slightly more predictable, I think that's a, it's a win one for both of us.
Anybody else want to address this?
On that, Councilmember Herbig and I went to a workshop last, last year of elected officials and lead staff for the Arch cities. And a lot of that discussion had to do with maybe pursuing a new dedicated fund source at, at the state level that really didn't go anywhere this, this last session. But I think it's fair to say that it's, that we could see a discussion among the member cities about the parity of, of contributions from, from the different member cities. So that could be coming up. I don't think that discussion has happened in a number of years. So just stay tuned on that.
Well, I think we're going to see the conversation continue, continue in Olympia also. So there may be a chance in the next couple of years where we do get a new dedicated fund source we could look at.
Wasn't, wasn't there some discussion here about a dedicated funding source, a 1% or something from, there's something that I'm recalling from a conversation that we had with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, that we were looking at something. What was that to sort of give us this?
I'm trying to remember now. I think there were three things they were looking at. There was a condo conversion fee as a possibility, a demolition fee, and then a possible addition to, a change to REIT three or an addition to three.
The REIT, yeah. Was it, was it the REIT? Because that would give us the stable funding source, I think, or at least a no one funding source that we could be contributing to Arch. But I thought there was something out there that we were, we were thinking about, pursuing.
Right. And none of those, none of those bills really advanced this, this last session that could be different coming up.
I thought this was something that we talked about from the end of the session until, I guess, June in one of the meetings we had. There was something having to do with housing affordability.
There was also a briefing that we had here at a council meeting from Arthur and one of the other board members, I believe, about.
December or November.
Right.
Quickly, I have one thing on that. I know, I remember when it, you know, some of this was discussed in Olympia and one of the things that seemed a little bit unfair to me was that it didn't seem like it spread the, the, the funding source evenly. It was always, it seemed like it typically got attached to one particular item or another. And, and as an example with REIT, I mean, that, it, it does strike me as being somewhat unfair to tax people selling their home when this is a, this is a community issue as much as anything. And so that's just, just from a philosophical standpoint, I do think, one of the things I like to think is if we could tie it or whatever happens in Olympia, if it can be a broader, a broader source so that we all have a stake in it.
And I remembered the conversation that, that you were remembering after the session with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. And that was the fact that, that some, some of the Arch members were going to be spending some time over the interim with some of the mostly east side legislators who, who were either working towards some legislation or had expressed some reservations in the last session about the legislation.
So we have a per capita $7 and change last night on for human services. Do we have a breakdown per capita of what we're, what our contribution is to Arch and how that compares with other cities?
They do provide that.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me right now.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see the per capita one.
Somewhere in my.
Sounds right.
There's a couple bucks a person.
It's a couple, okay. I know what the, I know what the dollar amount says, I just don't know what the per capita is.
I sort of agree with that philosophy. It's an important issue that all cities need to be responsible for. And as representatives of our citizens, we're taking their money and we're supposed to do really wise, good things with it and to help our community to have affordable housing, I think is one of them. So to do it on a per capita basis, I think is more fair than saying we're going to tax this area or penalize that area or make it harder for developers or whatever. But to just say, hey, fortunately we have Arch, so we have a way to spread funds around in a way that looks at the whole piece of town, so let's, or whatever area they cover. So let's fund them at a rate that we decide is reasonable on a however many people we have basis.
Because it sounds like we might be done with this topic. Well, I guess I was, I think we could leave it now, but I think for me still, just as an outsider learning from you as I listen, it sounds like there's a little bit of a, is it a policy priority now or is it a budget priority? It sounds to me from what I've just heard that you have a little bit of a toehold in the budget because you do contribute to Arch. But it sounds like maybe some of you are a little bit more interested in elevating this to a bigger issue than perhaps it currently is. And that might be a policy discussion that comes after the planning commission has done its work. So I'm just thinking to myself, I'm not trying to summarize for you what you're saying other than just say, I think you're kind of discussing whether it's policy at this time or budget or both. And there I would just say, I don't know that you've yet agreed, but we could leave it for a minute and talk about some of the other things on the list, too, and then kind of try to wrap all of them up. But I don't know if that's an incorrect interpretation of the question that you're asking.
I'd say keep the budget for now.
Is that okay with everybody?
I think that, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I can tell you what it says here for those that didn't find it says. For this biennium, we also reduced the capital contribution portion of our funding to Arch from 50,000 to 30,000 per year.
Right. And a few years ago, it was at 75,000.
Says the city's annual membership fee is 26,000 per year. Is that in addition to then the 30?
And is it the capital?
So it's a $56,000 commitment then.
Right. And Arch does provide a chart showing the comparison of the, of the different member cities and, and what their capital and, and other administrative contributions are. So that's, that's very available to us.
So that's a little over $2 a person. So where does that, where does that put us with the cities?
I mean, that's. That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't have that chart in front of me, but it's, it's available and we can, we can provide it.
If I may, one, I remember one of the issues with that was the comparison because not every city participated in Arch, but they may have done other, made do other things to help the issue. And so that it does make it, I think, difficult from some ways to compare apples and apples.
But I think all the east side cities contribute, right?
Is that all they do? I guess that's.
That's all Arch is, is east side cities.
No, but what I'm saying is that all, is that all that those east side cities do on this issue is just contribute to Arch and nothing else?
Well.
That's a good question.
Some, some of the cities, whether or not they contribute publicly on land or, or other kinds of actions, that, that counts toward their contribution. But, but I think it makes sense really to look at the other Arch member cities. And there are a number of them. And, and they're our neighbors. So it's, it's not just always a straight cash contribution. It can be other project opportunities that they get involved in that, that have a value to.
Correct.
Does, then does Arch include that in the totals from those other cities?
Yes.
The, a cash value of other contributions?
Yes.
Like what we've done across the street here? Does that contribute to it?
I'll, I'll have to check on that. It probably is, yeah.
Okay. That amounts to $250,000.
I also think it's important to differentiate between the membership that we paid Arch and the capital, because the, the capital contribution is what we've been cutting the last few years. The membership fee is set by Arch though, isn't it? They kind of tell us what that's.
What the administrative costs are, are going to be and, and, but I do recall that, I don't, I don't believe Bothell makes a capital contribution, but they, you know, make the other contribution.
So I would, I would be more comfortable when we're looking at setting some sort of per capita rate for Arch if we kept that focus on the capital side, because the other side is going to do what it does. And I would worry that if the membership fee kept going up and we had the whole thing tied to per capita, then we could eventually just be, then the capital side would get eaten away as the membership went up and, and we could end up doing less for people.
Anything else on this or do you want to go on to other items on this list?
Over time, how do our contributions compare to the benefits the city of Kenmore has received in terms of construction? Do we have that number anywhere? I don't know, you can do it.
We can report on that. We don't have it at our fingertips right now, but there certainly are projects that, that have been funded by Arch in, in the city.
Sure, I know. I'm just curious as to whether we got more than our money's worth or less than our money's worth and, or equal.
But I think that's a little bit misleading because Arch was funding the Kenmore Village project back in 2007, 2008. And they were fully funding that affordability component, which was a significant number of units that HDR was going to, or HRG was going to run. So that certainly would have been more than, than what our contributions would have been. But because of circumstances, that just never happened. But that, that capacity of getting millions of dollars to, to, for a project here is still there.
And, and I think the whole premise of Arch is to look at this as a, as a more of a regional issue, too.
Exactly.
Because it, you know, it benefits this, this part of the county if there are those range of housing opportunities. So, and you have opportunities come our way, you know, from, from time to time and, and so, but, but, you know, the organization is, is doing a lot of really good projects. And Mary, you went on a tour not too long ago.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I was thoroughly amazed by that South Kirkland Park and Ride where they had market rate facilities along with really, really nice affordable, affordable units. It just fit right in. You couldn't tell. It was really, really nice. But, I mean, what we just heard here a few weeks ago was, I forgot the term, but people that are, that are challenged because of rent, there was a term attached to that. But there, there's a significant portion of our population that is, that is really financially challenged trying to stay in this community. So I certainly have wanted to make sure that we continue to support Arch because we're going to need them.
I have one minor on a separate subject, and it's very minor, but the NPRSA, which is the senior center in Bothell, we, I'm the representative from Kenmore and will probably before the end of the year be coming to the member cities, asking for a little additional funding. And the reason is because our, just our operations budget is so minimal to get things done. We've had a lot of legal expenses over the last year particularly. And so it'll be, when I say minor, it'll probably be less or probably not more than 5,000 or so. But I just, that is something that I predict will be coming up here shortly. And it's, it's a, it's prorated based on all the members between Snohomish County, King County and the regional or local cities.
So I'm just going to say that if I, I'm going to be sending you this report, a summary of this meeting, and it seems to me like I'm hearing kind of three things. One, it does sound like all of you are saying you support Arch. Two, that a capital contribution for affordable housing should be based on per capita. I think I've heard three or four of you say that clearly. And then the other one is just kind of, I'm going to pick up on what Councilman Curtis is saying, it's kind of like, seems like both a policy as well as a budget priority.
And.
I'm looking at you because I've been kind of looking to you to see.
Oh, you're looking at me to tell when you're done?
Well, you kind of like started us off with this topic, so.
Well, I think they, the question really answered itself. And I think the discussion that we heard here was probably one of the most robust discussions that we've had. And I thought it really brought some clarity to what people were thinking. So, you know, I, I'm glad I brought it up.
Just one thing that just occurred to me and one minor concern I have about tying things directly to per capita is that as we, if we tie a dollar amount to, to the number of people here, you know, we are growing now. We will stop growing at some point. And then at that point, the buying power or the purchasing power will go down over time as inflation eats away at things. So it's worth, I think finding a per capita that we're comfortable with for now, for the next couple of years makes a lot of sense. But I think it's worth reexamining that every, every few years to make sure that we're still in line with our peers and that we're not falling behind.
And Debbie, will the planning commission address this at all?
No, the planning commission is just basically addressing policies and strategy. And the council direction was that they wanted to address any funding issues. So the funding will not be addressed by the planning commission.
Can I just say a final thing?
Yeah.
On the beauty of if it's tied to on a per capita, though, is at least that's consistent with, I think, the most, the metric that you, that our city manager used for social services. So the good part about that is then it's easy, you're comparing things that are somewhat related to. And so it's easier to kind of tie those together easier and understand where you are.
And Milton, you've been, I think, wanting to jump in here.
Yeah. Sorry I missed the, the early part of the discussion, but I have a couple thoughts on some of the philosophy items that you may have already discussed.
No, we didn't actually.
All right. So one is the third bullet, maintain some level of tax capacity, don't tap it out. So I don't think that's a high enough issue to be in a philosophy. The philosophy I would attach, if we were going to put anything, would be something like budget conservatively, maintain a positive six-year operational budget. I don't care how we do that. So to tie it down to one single item and say that's important to me, nothing's particularly important to me as long as the bottom line is right. So I don't think it belongs in the philosophy level statement. The next one down, pursue our vision and goals through relentless incrementalism. We talk about that, but that's not really how we work. We really have multiple parallel tracks, all ready for any big opportunity that happens. And if suddenly Lake Point happens, we're going to go there. It's not incremental. We, we multitask and we're ready for opportunities. So, so I don't think I would put that in my philosophy either. If you want to leave it there, I don't have a problem with that, but I just don't really think that's how we work. Like the fact that we have these big deals, we're, we're ready. When the big deal comes, we've maintained, if, if we have a good financial position, we're ready. That's what we have a strategic opportunity fund for. What other city has one of those? Nobody I know of. We're ready when the big thing comes. So we don't have to just tap away at this thing. We just, we just look for opportunities and we just, like I say, multitask is, I think, the best word that I can see when I see how busy our staff is and how many things they've produced already and how many things are on the to-do list. We are multitasking everywhere.
So I definitely think we should be positioning ourselves for the big deals like Lake Point and things like that. I'm also a big believer in relentless incrementalism and we, we do it all the time, whether it was the refurbished boat launch that state, that we helped state, the state with, or whether it's the strip of sidewalk we're putting out here on the south side of 181st or the sidewalk gaps that we did last year, or the improvements we're doing to parks and the, or the work that we're leveraging through volunteers. There's hundreds, thousands of. There's hundreds, thousands of little increments that we're leveraging that are making the city better every day. So I hope that we do continue to have a, put an importance on relentless incrementalism because all those little things over time do add up and make a difference. And I compare it to when my son was 14, he grew like a foot in one year, seemed like. It wasn't a foot, but it was a lot. But it was little tiny increments every day. They were imperceptible increments each day, but after a few months, I'd, oh, I'm looking up at you now. But I couldn't tell from day to day that he was growing. Same thing with our city. We have all these little incremental things we're doing to improve the city and over time they add up and over a five, 10-year period, we have a different city.
It's also possible to save all your money and all your capacity for those big things. And then once you jump on a big thing, you don't have money for the little things anymore. And so you need a balance between the two. We need to be prepared for the big things, but when we see something that'll make an improvement, like this sidewalk along here, and we see that funds are available through some grants, jump at it and we're able to do that. I can think of other cities that have committed themselves to big things and then can't manage the little things.
So, and this gets to Milton's comment. I'm not, so the maintain some level of taxing capacity, don't tap it out. To me, that's a basic philosophy. I mean, I would like to think I lived my life that way too, where you maintain, you do what you can do, but you know, you know, nobody goes out unless they have to under a bad situation where you're totally maxed out on every credit card, every loan you can achieve and all that stuff, you know. And so from the city's perspective, I look at it the same way. There's comfort to me in knowing we have the ability to raise revenues as a body without going to the voters or anything because we have the capacity there. And I think that's important. And so whether it needs to be listed as a philosophy, I actually don't know, but I know for me, it's an important philosophy in how I think about our budgeting and our taxing and everything we do.
I guess I would say that is sort of, that's a last reserve, but my idea of, you know, maintain a positive six-year operational budget, that's way more proactive. So it's okay to have that last, you know, stand, but I hope we never get there.
Right.
Well, there are a couple of things that, you know, we just kind of assume that our philosophy is to maintain the positive six-year forecast and maybe calling that out. And the other piece is that I was reminded during this discussion of one of the things I really value about our city, and that is that ability to move and take advantage of opportunities or adjust when situations change. And we, probably the best example of that is the sidewalk and the Target Zero and all that focus. Unfortunately, it was in response to tragic deaths, but to direct resources and staff time. And so that, to me, is such a key valuable thing that we want to preserve that and enhance that through our budgeting process. And so, you know, what the discussion that just happened about the, you know, maintaining that reserve in terms of taxing capacity, if we had to go there, or, you know, having some fund reserves that we talked about last night, you know, those are all things that we've really utilized in the past to take advantage of opportunities, and there are many more examples, sidewalk grants, and I mean, it goes on and on. So I think those are important in our philosophy. The other thing is the way we get there is to continue to look for ways to slow down the growth of our fixed cost, you know, to manage those fixed costs. And again, it's assumed, but I think it's important that, you know, we continually look at, you know, what adds value. And that's the beauty of the priority-based budgeting system that we've, you know, had this first run-through is, you know, really looking at what we do in terms of value that it brings to the community and philosophy.
So one example of that, Councilmember Sperry, is something that we've been watching in Kirkland. They left the AWC Health Benefits Trust, and they went self-insured and went to a high-deductible HSA program, the Health Savings Account Program. And that sounds a little scary at first, but from what little we know about it, it actually seems like the employees might be getting more value from that than they were under the old traditional plan. So we want to look into it and we might have the opportunity to piggyback onto that. I want to tread carefully and make sure that our employees are still whole and getting what they need to. But the nice thing about it though is Kirkland has saved significant dollars by going that route, and they've been able to cut their healthcare costs and flatten out the rate of increase. So, but that's an example of, okay, we got these rising fixed costs, what can we do to control them and be creative about it?
Well, I really appreciate that because I remember the presentation, and it just seemed like there was so much potential to find, you know, a new way to do something essentially old, you know, taking that old traditional health insurance and the ever-escalating costs. And if I recall, it wasn't at 6% a year for the benefit side in your model? Yeah, so I mean, that's, there's a lot of room there. You could have a tool that would still provide, you know, what's needed and more cost-effective. Thank you for looking into that.
Yeah, so it's actually on Joanne's to-do list, and she just hasn't been able to carve out enough time to work on it, given all the other priorities we've given her. So it's just a matter of trying to carve out some time for her to work on it. Because the consultant that helped Kirkland is standing by, ready to help us and help us to investigate it and look into it, so we just need to carve out the time to try to do that somehow.
I have a question. So this is actually a perfect time because I was wondering what, I know that there was a lot of changes and stuff that were happening. Is that all, when you're saying you're going to work on, is that, am I premature in my question, or is that something that, has there been, have there been changes that are of value to us to know about? And I recall the HSA was one of them.
The only change we've implemented that has been advantageous from a cost containment point of view is offering the High Deductible Health Plan with the Health Savings Account, which began mid-year last year.
It's voluntary and.
Voluntary, correct.
I have about 10% that signed up for it.
Yeah, there were six.
Oh, more than 10%.
Yeah, I don't think six renewed this year, but we still have a handful of folks that are taking advantage of it. And we do have to start planning for the elimination of the current plan that most of the employees are still on, which will be eliminated in 2018.
That was my next question. So that's the highly taxed one that they were going to add, the Cadillac tax or whatever?
So that Cadillac tax, Cadillac, the Cadillac tax, the excise tax has been moved out a few years into the early.
2020.
Into 2020, and we're hearing that it might just get permanently moved out and eliminated. So, yeah, so that's good that we don't have that tax breathing down our necks in 18.
No, but AWC has made the decision to go ahead and still eliminate that plan.
Which means we would still have a PPO plan, but it would be a larger employee contribution.
Right, it would be a higher deductible than we have now.
Anything else on your priorities?
Kind of going back to what Councilmember Sperry said earlier about maintenance, I think, you know, we call it road maintenance, but I think overall, we might want to call out specifically just infrastructure, general infrastructure and capital maintenance, facility maintenance, especially with the town green coming online with new, you know, possible new parks acquisition, you know, growth. That's going to be something that we really need to spend some more time, really making sure that 20 years down the road when we have to redo the roof on the town green, that we're ready to go, things like that. And there'll be ongoing things. I just think that's, you know, the more we focus on maintenance today, the better off we'll be in the long term. So I think that's something we should really be looking at closely. So looking at number seven, where you say allocate funding for maintenance for new projects that come online, would you change that? No, I just completely skipped over seven somehow when I was reading the. Oh, okay. I don't know how I missed that. Apologies. No worries, it was, we just barely gave this to you, so.
Seven's kind of two topics in one, so you probably stopped after the first sentence, so maybe break those up a bit.
Okay.
And even if there's a little bit of overlap, we could still do, which I tried to do just based on what I heard from you last night, we could just put a few things under that, like parks, town green. So, I mean, there'll be a little bit of overlap, but, I mean, they're priorities. There's going to be.
I would just say old projects like city halls count two. We've got to keep them all up.
Can I make a quick comment on that? A year ago, when we were preparing to receive our award from AWC and they came and did a video, the architect and the project manager who worked on the city hall, they hadn't really been here for a few years, and both of them, the first thing that they said was, this building looks great. It has been well-maintained. This is, this is not something we see every day, you know, that five years later, six years later, when they go to a, go to a project that they've worked on, but they really independently remarked on how well-maintained the building was.
So I do have a question on the priorities that you drafted from what you, the feedback you got from last night, and that is I don't see anything on economic development, and yet that is your number two council goal.
Actually, I kind of do see something on that. And I guess on the San Antonio Park, the lodge, even though that's something that we really don't have a say in whether it's yes or no, at least at this point, it still is important, I think, to the economic development, certainly of the region and our city, in that it's just another draw to get people here. And I think as Lake Point materializes and as the downtown redevelopment happens, I think that's certainly going to add a lot to Kenmore. And I think, given the fact with what we're doing across the street, with the potential of Lake Point, with a lodge happening, I think is going to cause other things to happen, certainly in this downtown core. So I, you know, I see all of that, at least three and four, as something that's related to economic development in a big way.
Yeah, I agree, a lot of amenities that we have in town and parks and town green,
all those things add to it. I think it's a given that all this, the goal is economic development and improved livability of the town, of the city. But also missing from this as a priority is public safety, but I think that's a given. We assume that. But it is a priority, and there's some that might look at it and say, well, you're not even listing it as a priority. So maybe it should be just in, like, it wasn't one of our goals a while back, but it was just sort of, we assumed that it, we were doing it.
Go ahead.
You know, actually, the goals, the number two goal, it breaks it down into four bullet points.
Right.
And two of the four are very directly related to what we have. I would say that promote image, that could also fall in there. I'd say the one that really is probably the least or the most obvious omission, if you were to think of one, is support of existing businesses. And that's something we really haven't talked a lot about, maybe what that would be, but that is one of the bullet points of our goals.
I don't know, oh, go ahead.
I would just say that, you know, I don't think that these draft priorities that we discuss from a budget standpoint necessarily need to be 100% in alignment with our goals. Otherwise, why bother to talk about anything? Just pull out the goals and say, here, this is what we're talking about, and this is what we're going to spend our money on. So I think it's okay to think about it fresh and new and ask questions and have discussions that don't exactly have all the same things on them.
I do have one question for our city manager, or maybe Nancy will know this. Do you know when the, that period, the zone that we have that particular trial thing on diminished impact fees and parking requirements, do you know when that expires? Because I figure it's probably coming up relatively soon. So probably around the end of the year.
We're thinking around that time.
Can you send us an email on that, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It seems to me that it would be helpful, one question that's on the agenda that we haven't addressed, and I don't know if this starts with you, Rob, but I mean, if you look at these as a tentative set of priorities, or now it seems like you're moving toward confirming them, you know, how would these priorities for the next two years align with the anticipated plan or planned initiatives and work program items? So, you know, are they in alignment or is it going to have some kind of really drastic impact on the work plan and kind of change things?
That's a really great question. I like that question. Can I ask my coworkers what they think about that question? Would that be okay? So of this, these draft priorities, how do they align with what we're already working on, what our marching orders have been, council direction that we've been getting?
I think the maintenance piece of emphasizing that as a priority is, seems to have moved to the top than what it has been in the past. So what's needed to support that, I mean, I know Chris has got the project going, but it seems to me it could be broader than that. I'm not sure if it would be, I don't, I don't know. I'm just kind of thinking, I'm not, I'm not really sure how, whether, what Chris is doing will completely address what council's anticipating to address, ongoing maintenance of infrastructure.
Ooh, I got the Councilmember Herbig's mic, Patty. I think the Public Works Service Analysis is comprehensive. I think it is parks, surface water, right-of-way, vegetation, facilities, fleet. I think it is a very comprehensive study that'll look at not only the infrastructure we have now and levels of service and maintenance, but also what we know is coming online in the next five years plus. So I think it will be comprehensive. But I guess to tie into Debbie's comment, I mean, we hear from Jennifer every year that maintenance is so important, but it's not a council goal. So I guess I'm struggling with, you know, council goals versus budget priorities because I do think overlay, surface water, I think all those continue to be high priority, but like we said, there's not public safety here either. So to me, it seems like I'm just hearing now is a good time for maintenance to have a special emphasis to see, you know, is there anything we want to do differently, which is what this public work study will look at. Does that help?
Yeah, along those lines, there are a lot of expenses that we see out in the future in terms of maintenance and like was referred to, a new roof on the building or whatever. In my last campaign, my opponent was critical of the fact that we hadn't set money aside to rebuild the bridge, knowing that it was failing. Well, we knew. Well, we knew that there was grant money out there, and it was just a matter of procuring that grant money to fund it. If we'd been setting aside money all along, maybe we should be thinking of planning for future funding. And in this case, on the bridge, we were planning on grant funding becoming available as the bridge deteriorated and had to be rebuilt. But there are a lot of other things, like the new roof that just went on the, you know, 30 years from now, we're going to need a new roof on the pavilion over there. Should we be budgeting for that and setting money aside so that when the time comes, we don't have to look and see where we can find the money? And maybe your Public Works survey, study that you're, you're embarking on is going to identify things like that. We already do that with vehicles. We've got a, don't we have a fund that is a replacement, vehicle replacement fund and so on? And maybe we should be doing it for more things.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. We, we have it for vehicles and heavy equipment, but we have not provided for replacement of large components of city hall or, you know, such as the roof on this city hall.
Right.
Or, but I, I think it's, it's an awesome idea, something I'd really like to see.
And also, have we, weeding the green roof?
Pardon?
Weeding the green roof? Have we been maintaining that?
Yes. I think so. I never see it.
There's some really beautiful flowers on it right now. I was admiring that today or yesterday.
But the Public Works Service Analysis is not going to be an inventory of major capital things that need to be replaced later. We can add it if we want to, but that was not on my radar. And I think we're also talking about different types of things. We know that a bridge replacement actually is, it's a major capital project that is grant-friendly, as are some other things, but there's so much of what we do and have to replace that I don't know that there's grants available.
Yeah, but it, you know, if the roof starts leaking all of a sudden 20 years from now in city hall here, and we haven't, we haven't been setting aside the money to redo the roof, and we're looking at a $20,000 bill for that, you, you, you have to look at your discretionary funds and, I don't know, it might be better to be planning for that sort of thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to respond to that and just say, I would really encourage you to have that discussion, realizing that putting aside money for those future replacements will compete in the general fund for, for other programs that, that we wish to accomplish. But I think it's a smart idea. It's either, you know, pay as you go and find the money when the need arises, or set aside money for the future.
Yeah, you know, we, we did have this discussion a couple of years ago, and, and it was really a good discussion because, because we weren't, we weren't really planning for that. And, and it was one thing 10 years ago, when we had no assets at all to, that were depreciating that were of any significance. But if you really think about the things we're building, things we have built, like city hall and the plaza, and if the bond passes, those improvements there, and they're all new, so they're all, everything we're building is new, so it's not an issue now, but it will become an issue. And it's definitely, I think it does, I think it's really important that we plan for it and that we do try to, I, and you're right, it competes, but I think it has to compete because otherwise I don't think it's a prudent way to, to keep building without thinking about that. You know, it's, well, yeah, that's all I need to say.
You take condo association, and some condo associations have reserve funds that they've been contributing to all along, and so all of a sudden the whole, all the units need new roofs. It, it isn't a massive assessment among all the owners, and it, it, it really pays to be prepared for that sort of thing.
Can I say, that is a, that is a great example, because I review HOA budgets and homeowners' association minutes and, and resale certificates all the time, and you can have two condos that look exactly the same, just like you can have two cities that look exactly the same, and one condo has an excellent homeowners' association that has planned for a depreciation schedule and everything for their capital improvements, and the other hasn't. And the, the key is just look at a copy of their homeowners' association minutes, and you find out what they're talking about. It's where are we going to get this money and how are we going to do this? And the ones that have planned, it's not, those aren't the discussions. They've, they've done it. So I, that's, I actually love that analogy.
Yeah. We saved for, for 10 years to build this city hall, setting aside money, and then we were able to buy it with cash. I'd hate to have all the repairs, you know, have to borrow money to fix the roof. Yeah, enough said.
So, didn't you bring up a few years ago, yes, about a bridge replacement fund, and we were going to contribute to that?
Yes.
And now that all that money has now been funded, what's ever happened to that conditional contribution we made to the bridge replacement fund? And could we transfer that money out and put it toward the starting of a roof replacement fund?
It's been whittled away.
Has it been whittled away?
But the concept is exactly, that's why I was concerned about it then, and I just, and it's the same issue, you're, you're bringing up the same point.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Oh, make no mistake, we'll still be putting a lot of our own money into that bridge.
Yes.
What are we assuming, like 2 million so far that we're going to be putting in?
I think we acknowledged we needed to have some skin in the game, so 2 million sounds right as far as an anticipated contribution.
Yeah.
We did set aside money that, 14, 15, 13, 14 by Annem. And then when bridge inspection indicated we needed to do more study and more work, and we retained Jacob's firm, we used that money to fund that.
Okay.
But it, but, and it went up the bridge. It, it did serve its purpose, correct.
Lori?
So I just wanted to say on the maintenance, Public Works Service Maintenance Study, what is it called?
We need to find a cute name.
Okay. You're good at acronyms, actually.
Imagine Public Works.
What is it? Imagine?
Imagine Public Works.
People might laugh with that.
IPW.
This kind of reminds me of what we did a couple of years ago with looking at police services and, and how, you know, what the most cost-effective way to provide those services were. And that particular study obviously ended up being a confirmation of the path that we were on. And so I'm actually looking forward to this study, not that, you know, we have to stay doing what we're doing or any of that, but I think it's going to be a really important information for us as policymakers to, to help, you know, with, with allocating resources so we can, you know, do the types of maintenance that we want to continue doing. And I, I think it's just perfect timing that the study is in the works at this point.
Do you all want to say anything else about any other impacts that you see these possible budget priorities having upon the work plan or initiatives, Debbie?
Well, I think there's, there's some uncertainty. For example, the walkways and waterways will have a, would have a huge impact on your work program if it passes or it doesn't pass. And if it passes, then you're gearing up pretty significantly to get those projects ready for implementation. So I think that's, has a, would have a huge effect.
Are you saying that the bond measure does not fund the staff time to gear up for these?
There's money included in that, but you still have to then figure out how you're going to get it done. The money might be there, but you still need the resources to be able to get to that implementation.
Personnel resource.
Whether it's personnel or consultants or whatever to, to make it happen.
Anything else at all? So are you basically all in agreement with these budget priorities? I think the one difference is that seven got split into two, and with number eight being allocating fund for maintenance, we can just put bullet points to highlight things like parks, town green, city hall, so. And then I have been taking notes on, I mean, even some of the discussion about philosophy. I'm just putting those into the notes that you can then look at, say, does this kind of reflect your common interests? And so I'll make some changes there and even add some things, because I thought maybe, to me, the important things you added were like taking advantage of situations where there are changes or opportunities that come about. Lori mentioning the nice, you use the beauty of public priority budgeting is that you add value. So there you've kind of made that connection too in terms of, you know, budget language. So I'll add some of these things in here too. Is you okay with this for now? Okay. I'm not so sure exactly. We're a little bit behind. I don't know, maybe Patty hasn't come back yet with dinner? Because the next thing we were going to do is just then go through these and have you talk a little bit about what are the outcomes that you would expect by December of 2018, just to give Rob a little bit of, a sense of your expectations. Should we just launch into that or take a couple of a break even to?
Yeah, with six, right?
Yeah, we were thinking about doing it at six, but then Patty mentioned she had to go get it.
Okay.
Because they don't deliver it to city hall, and they had been running late, so unlike last night, where she had it here by five, it wasn't quite here yet. Should we just keep going?
I'm okay with that. Are you?
Okay.
So outcomes are, I would think would be parallel to these priorities. If these are our priorities, we would want to see outcomes that are linked to those, like Lake Point underway by the end of the, by Annem. Wouldn't that be a nice outcome? And phase one or two or whatever, you know? But they would, those outcomes that you're asking for should be related to these priorities. Right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking though that, like when I was interviewing you, a couple of you had a certain expectation about, well, this is where we will be by December 31st of 2018 with Lake Point. And then a couple of you said something a little bit different, and I remember at one point Rob was even, I think there were three of you together, and just kind of talking a little bit, okay, so what's the, where will that can be? So we could go through each one of, this, what I was thinking is we'd go through these and talk a little bit about what are the expectations that you have, so you can even hear from each other, and then Rob can kind of get a sense of, you know, what is it that you expecting to achieve by 2018? And maybe he could even say, you know, that could be a little bit, running a little bit faster than is likely to happen. So that's why we were going to have this conversation. But now here's dinner.
Well, here's dinner. You want to stop?
Well, I think it's coming hot, so, you know, out of courtesy, even for what Patty's been going through to get it to everybody, we ought to take a break then.
Okay.
15?
Yeah, so let's come back at about 25 after.
Eat instead of think?
Yeah.
All the bread will go somewhere else.
I don't think so. That smells like chicken. I've got the thinking.
Yep.
There's also a mowers.
See what I ordered.
And upper mowers.
In between there?
No way.
Right.
You gotta pull it. You need to pull it or take a root off, so that you can clean it.
Oh, you got your steak.
Yeah. It's Argentina. You can pop us, whatever pop us want or something, I don't know.
You go. Because we're after the same thing. Go, go, go. Where'd you get it, boss?
I don't know.
Well, you got a whole bunch of stuff too. What is all this stuff?
I think it's, I think it's pulled apart.
What are these sauces? Well, one, one was a salad and one was a dinner. Yeah. That's true. Just remember what goes around comes around.
Brent just can't take it in here. Scoop that. Looks like mine has a Mexican theme in it, so it's, you just can't go wrong. Can't go wrong on that.
Well, mine's got chili peppers, so it's something.
What'd you get?
Something to take with later.
Oh, I'm going to be the messy one. Oh, so is Brent.
Yikes, what's that? Oh, my goodness. I think it is tortillas.
I knew it was Mexican because it had jalapenos, so.
Yep. But, I think you're missing, you're missing.
My tortillas?
Uh-huh, they're at the bottom. They're makes little burritos.
Mmm.
Or tacos or something to that.
I forget. Turned up Debbie into street tacos.
Yeah, that's it. That's what it was.
I remember that now that I, now that I found that you've mentioned that there's tortillas down there.
Yeah, these are street tacos, Alan.
Yeah. Yum, yum. Is there a Brazilian steakhouse in Kansas City?
Um, I don't know. Yes, I think there is. Want to go?
Eight priorities, but let's go even a little bit deeper and look at some of the different bullets, and just have you do kind of quickly, what are the two or three priority, I'm sorry, two or three outcomes you'd be looking for by the end of 2018, just to give some guidance and direction? So, starting with transportation, are there some specific outcomes you're looking for under multimodal, the pedestrian bike safety, which is one of your goals, obviously? Things you'd like to see done by the end of 2018?
No more pedestrian fatalities.
No sidewalk gaps. Closed. I would like to see us certainly be as, half as successful as we've been in obtaining funding for sidewalk projects.
Okay, there's three. I'll just second what the mayor said. Those two things are really important. We need to keep moving on them. Okay?
Continue to fund Target Zero.
I'm sorry?
Continue to fund Target Zero.
Well, Target Zero by, by its name is a goal, zero deaths. And we were talking, how many years? But each year between now and that, that endpoint, our goal is really no traffic deaths during that period of time.
Okay. What about outcomes for regional transportation and Transportation CIP? That's kind of broad, but...
I'd love to jump in on this one, but I don't want to step on any toes.
So I...
I didn't hear what your question was, Jim. I'm sorry.
Well, I just, that's kind of broad, so I'm just thinking, are there, is, is it the right way to say it? What are outcomes you're looking for there under regional transportation and Transportation CIP? Couple of things you...
So on Transportation CIP, I think if we look at our C, Transportation CIP, just what do we plan to do by 2018 in that CIP and do those things? And then...
But each year between now and that endpoint, our goal is already no traffic deaths during that period of time.
What about outcomes for regional transportation and Transportation CIP? That's kind of broad, but.
I'd love to jump in on this one, but I don't want to.
Step on any toes. So I.
I didn't hear what your question was, Jim. I'm sorry.
Well, I just, that's kind of broad. So I'm just thinking, are there, is it the right way to say it? What are outcomes you're looking for there under regional transportation and Transportation CIP? Couple of things you would.
So on Transportation CIP, I think if we look at our C, Transportation CIP, just what do we plan to do by 2018 in that CIP and do those things? And then as far as regional transportation, I'm hoping that we can get some things legislatively at the state to help us. So whether it's funding for a grade separated crossing or some sort of help with Lake Point Transportation, you know, things like that. Where we know that, we know that traffic congestion is always going to be here and it's bigger than we are. It's, traffic congestion is caused by regional trends and decisions the state or the state is making. And so anything we can get, any help we can get from the state to alleviate the congestion. So to, just to shorten that up, I would just say financial assistance from the state to help relieve congestion.
I guess, along those lines, I would like to see us take advantage of some of the, some of the companies that are out there that can help us with gathering some of this information. For instance, INREX. INREX has got tons of historical data on traffic. Counts, flows, whatever, along 522 corridor, along wanting to drive. And I thought, I would love to see us take advantage of some of that information that they've accumulated over the years to sort of substantiate what we're actually seeing daily here to help us continue to improve transportation through the city.
Nigel?
I think something that we need to think about on the budget as far as this item goes and prepare for is if ST3 does pass, we are going to, I think, want to put resources into consultants or additional staff time to make sure that what gets built in Kenmore is what we want to see. And we'll be having to work very closely with Sound Transit to make sure that our vision lines up with their vision as they come through the city. So that's something that we should be thinking about going forward because our projects, if they happen, are relatively early in the grand scheme of things. And they will be one of the first things that they start working on. So just something to put on the radar.
Good idea, yeah.
Anything else on Sound Transit 3? So you said making sure that the city's vision is the one that Sound Transit adopts or ends up implementing? Anything else?
I think, I think it's important that if for some reason Sound Transit 3 doesn't, doesn't pass, that we continue our involvement with whatever iteration comes next, that we are continued to be included in any project list.
And just staying on Sound Transit 3 for a second, Councilmember Sperry, or do you want to go, did you want to go somewhere else?
Going back to the Lake Point project and I guess my, one of my outcomes I'd like to see is having an agreed upon solution for the, for the traffic and for the roadway, the crossing that Rob referred to. And part of that solution frankly may be, you know, where the, the parking garage and the rapid bus station is, I'm not sure how you call it, BRT station or whatever. So, so I think that's really an important piece. Obviously it won't be built, but to have a plan and hopefully some funding get going.
So obviously that's related to both transportation and specifically at Lake Point. So maybe just, just go to that for a second. How about other outcomes you're looking for regarding Lake Point?
I think certainly by 2018, I would love to see the baseball fields at least underway, St. Ed's, and certainly something going on with, with the lodge up there. I'd certainly love to have a much better idea of what potentially could happen at Lake Point.
Let me go back. I'm sorry. Let's just look at the ones under transportation for just a second. Is there anything else that you wanted to say about Sound Transit and then, Sound Transit 3, and then maybe we could just touch upon road maintenance and then we'll come back to this order. So I'm taking these notes, but let me get you back there on this in the order. Councilmember Dunning?
So we talked about road maintenance yesterday, but you know, having a plan on neighborhood streets and how we want to proceed on making sure those stay maintained.
Anything else?
On the transportation side of things?
Yeah.
I would love to see us continue to pursue water taxi. We've gone through this whole process and we're almost at the top of the list. And I'd sure love to see something come from it. That's county funded.
Sorry, I meant from, from this budget side. Is there, since we're talking budget items, I was just wondering if there's something in that that in order to pursue that goal, do we have, is there a budget side of that we need to know?
I don't know there's necessarily a budget side of it, but it's a transportation outcome that I'd like to see.
Okay. And so that would be working with the county because you said it's a county.
To continue those efforts, yeah. I mean, I guess there is a small, because there's staff time obviously involved.
I just didn't know if there's something else there that I wasn't aware of. Is it worthwhile talking about outcomes for the walkways and waterways? Or should we talk about the assumption that it passes? That part of the things that you're looking to achieve by the end of 2018? So maybe we should do that, assuming it is passing rather than saying let's skip it because it may not pass.
Could I say one more thing about ST3? So what I'm hearing is that cities that lay the groundwork for transit are, get much further ahead and more likelihood of getting things built and on time. So there's some things we may need to do to do that. I heard that one city changed it so that transit is a permitted use versus something else. I, I don't know how that applies to us because you'd think that transit would be a permitted use already, but, so there's questions like that that we need to figure out and answer. And any, any changes we need to make in our transportation elements, things to just pave the way, clear the path for sound transit.
I had some meetings today with Dal Konstantin and Dimbowski, and comments were made about Kenmore and about the way that we have obtained money and used money and how impressed a number of people are with what we've been able to deliver in a short amount of time.
Anything else at all on, when you look at this list, these four items under transportation that you wanted to say you would like to suggest to Rob that would be outcomes by the end of 2018? Otherwise I'll move you on. Was that on the whole list, did you say? Or was that? Just on the transportation items.
So on, on walkways and waterways, there might be some quick wins. Well, two that I can think of. One is the Rhododendron Park Boardwalk. Where to under promise over deliver, we're saying 19, but it might be able to be built in 18 for the, the boardwalk at Rhododendron Park. And then also if we get a TIB grant that we're going to apply for this year for the sidewalk gap in front of NUD, then it could, that, that gap and perhaps the gap in front of Coventry could be built in 18 or 19. I think officially we're saying 19.
Were there two you just said? I'm sorry, one Coventry and?
Yeah, two, two sidewalk gaps. Just say between 182nd and in front of NUD. I don't know, 185th? I think it goes a little beyond 185th. Yeah, just two sidewalk gaps. I guess we can say, well, we have one council member that lives in Coventry, so I don't want to say Coventry. But just to say two downtown sidewalk gaps on 68th. And then and then, yeah, those were the two sidewalk ones. And then there's the Rhododendron. And then all the other, all the other projects could be, you know, in, in beginning phases of design. Grants applied for, for Juanita.
Question? Anybody want to come?
It has to do with Lake Point, but there's a lot of transportation issues that we're going to have to address associated with Lake Point. And I just might suggest that we keep that on a front burner and work in a parallel with the development with the, with the developer. And it's not something we should sit back and ignore and then say in 2019, say, oh, we have to do some roads too, how we can do it. But it's something that is going to have to happen in this biennium, working along with Lake Point and the developers' plans. I don't know if it needs to be said, but.
So working with the developer and plans, including transportation or the traffic plan? We've come back to Lake Point a couple of times, so let's just set aside St. Edwards Park for a second. And just when we talk a little bit more, what are, would you be expecting to have achieved for Lake Point by the end of 2018 in addition to what the deputy mayor just said?
I would certainly expect to be able to see some realistic concept plans by 18.
Well, mine's kind of related to that, that we have, there's every six months they have to produce something different to keep the development agreement in place or whatever permits those are. So just that they're, they stay on track and we monitor with them and work in every way possible to help them to be successful.
Yes, that's stay on, stay on track with CSDP permit extension requirements. Is that good?
Yep.
So can I throw something out there? As a goal to strive for, signed development agreement.
Oh, that'd be awesome. I'm with you.
What's that?
That would be awesome.
Yeah, by the end of the 1718? I don't think it's too unrealistic.
I don't think so either. It seems like it was about a year ago that we were talking to the principal of the developing firm. And he was saying he expected within three years to be turning some dirt, doing something. Well, that could be by the end of 18. So conceivably, but nothing seems to usually go faster than you expect it to.
And the reason why I say to strive for is because more than 50% of the equation is dependent on someone we have no control over. And so it really, it's all dependent on how fast or slow they want to go.
I think it's a good goal. I mean, we all knew or know that there would be a development agreement of some sort.
So I think based on the extensions on the CDSP, C.
CS.
Commercial Site Development Plan, CSDP, that we knew that it's going to happen. So I, I think it's a great goal. And let's just hope we can get there.
Is the conceptual plan that they just submitted to the city just recently, is that consistent with the existing commercial site development plan? So it's, it's similar to the original plan that came out years and years ago.
It's not.
But it's phased and.
It's similar in that it, it's not anymore development intensive, like it's a similar number of units and all that, but it's very different as far as layout.
Okay. But if they want to do something more significant, then they have to come up with another, a different commercial site development.
Yeah.
It's more, if it's more extensive, if it's bigger.
Yep.
They need to redo it.
Yep. And, and they're, we're going through this now, but if they go over a certain number of units, then they'll actually need a comp plan amendment. And a comp plan amendment can be concurrent with and conditioned by a development agreement.
But the sooner we have an idea of what's going to go on there, the sooner we can start looking how we're going to be able to obtain funding to, to do our side of things. That's why I think that it's important that we get that here in the next biennium and start moving on it.
Hey, I'm with you. Especially when it comes to like talking to the state and asking the state for help. But they just don't seem to be in that big of a hurry. And we've been talking for many months now about the 17 biennium, or the 17 legislative session and the, the importance to have our act together so that we can have the appropriate request. And they're just, I'm on camera and everything, so I need to be careful, but they're just taking their time, it seems like.
Well, I'm thinking about the early win that ST3 is talking about with, with the parking structures and whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, this, this is something that's going to get done. And I'd sure love to see that be part of our contribution.
I have a question that's kind of related to the, the designs they sent us recently. I assume those are all public?
Yes.
And anybody's had an opportunity to see them?
Well, you all have.
Right. Has it gone beyond that for distribution?
Staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know parking structure is part of that and perhaps that parking structure could be coordinated with the ST3 parking structure.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I wouldn't advertise that and distribute it too much more because it will certainly change. And I don't want anything etched in people's minds this early on.
And that's not a decision that we can make. That's a decision that Sound Transit has to make along with other parties, not, not necessarily us.
Brent?
We've been talking about it. I do, and I let Rob know, but I do think that that plan that was sent is far less than perfect and ideal.
Oh, for sure.
Yep. Anything else on Lake Point in terms of outcomes? Should we return to St. Edwards Park? You just mentioned real quickly, just having something going, but are there a couple specific outcomes you'd like to see? You want to kind of give that direction to Rob?
It'd be nice if ballfields were under construction or built.
Anything else to say about that? Yes?
I guess I am more concerned about that maybe than some of you, since it hasn't been funded yet. Until I see a really good funding plan that doesn't compete with other priorities, I'm not sure it's that important to me to see this thing built into, in this next biennium.
For me, it's, it's a high priority and I would, it's been something that the city's been tossing around for over 10 years. And so to me. tossing around for over ten years. And so to me, I absolutely would make it a very high priority.
So the way I've approached it is, you know, you gave us marching orders to get a lease with the state, and that's been our focus. But we've also been realizing that if we actually do get this lease, then we also have to find a way to fund it. So not even on paper yet, more on my whiteboard, we have kind of cobbled together a way to fund it without going to the voters. But you're right, that need, that, that way to fund it, or the proposed method to fund it, needs to come before you in a more organized, more formal proposal from staff. And that has not yet been done. But what we, what we didn't want to do is get a lease and then have no way to fund it. So we have done this whiteboard exercise to say, okay, we actually do have some available cash to fund it. One other caveat I want to throw out there is we are still working on the cost estimates, and those darn things just, they never go down. They always go up. And that cost estimate keeps popping up, and we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about that. So, anyway, so yes, getting it funded is super important, but our focus has been trying to get that darn lease approved. And that's been our main focus.
Could you, I think you'd bring a funding plan to the council?
I will, probably as part of the, whenever we do the next CIP update, probably in the fall.
I guess I share that view in that it's, to me, I've been working on this for not as long as Brent's been working on it, but-
No, Brent's been working on it long before he came on the council.
I know, that's what I was saying. He's, so he's been working on it longer, but it's something that I, I really want to see done. And certainly, at least well underway, you know, within this biennium.
You wanted to not talk about the lodge, right?
I'm recommending that, because it's quasi-judicial, we skip the lodge. And I think there's an outcome out there that would be pretty obvious, and that is, and I'm just speaking from, I mean, I'm not speaking for you, but I think that having, you know, a lease signed and that project underway as well would be something that could materialize in the next biennium. But other than that, I'm recommending that you don't talk about it, given its quasi-judicial nature.
So, we move on to number four. You've talked about Lake Point. So let me just ask this question in terms of our process. Town Green sounds like it would be something separate to talk about, but then when you, when you talk about one eighty-first, accommodating parking and things like that, do you want to just kind of lump those together and talk about, in general, what you're looking for in terms of downtown redevelopment? But first, talk a little bit about Town Green and what your expectations or hopes are by the end of 2018. So there are some outcomes that you'd like to see by the end of the next biennium for Town Green?
I mean, the obvious stuff is that it's, that we have a good tenant, it's fully programmed, it's being heavily used. And that all seems pretty obvious, but I think that's what we're hoping for.
And that we have some snow, so we can see the hot rocks steam.
And a restaurant on the other end.
But all those things are going to be happening before this biennium we're talking about. This is due to be finished this fall. And aren't we going to be implementing, or is it just going to sit there until we make some plans next biennium? No, we've got to be making plans now to program the space. And it should be well underway, pretty early in the biennium, I would think.
Yeah, in fact, I, you were kind of thinking on the same wavelength as me. I think rather than end of eighteen, I think by mid-seventeen, all those things you mentioned, Councilmember Herbig. As far as the restaurant goes, the, the option for Main Street to exercise that lease expires in March. For a predetermined sum of money, I can't remember how much, they can extend that lease, that option, for another few months. Can't remember. So by sometime in seventeen, they need to exercise that option. And if they don't exercise the option, that means they were unable to secure a sit-down restaurant. And if they are unable to secure a sit-down restaurant and exercise that option, then we need to reevaluate that property and what to do with it. Because my thought is if they, if they can't secure a sit-down restaurant, it wasn't for lack of trying, they are trying hard to get one. And so if we don't get one, then that tells me that the market has spoken, and that we need to look at something else. And so I don't know that we need to have a big, long conversation about that now, because it's so hypothetical, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
But what it really means is that they're unable to secure a tenant for a restaurant that they will own and build. And it may be that there are restaurants out there would like to build their own structure.
Could be.
Rather than, rather than dealing with a developer in the middle. You'd be more in tune with that sort of thing, Brent?
I would say that when the, when the Town Green is built, and it's programmed, the pavilions programmed and everything, I would think it'll make, that'll be the best sales pitch for this space more than anything, regardless of what Main Street does. I think you get people out there. So I'll bring that up, because I'd say, I wouldn't want us to change course. I think you're right, there may be a point where you have to look at other options, but I would hope we would at least try to stick with our plan for a while, to give it some time to be programmed and show what a desirable space is.
Well, okay, you want to-
I did, but he just said it. So I wouldn't jump too, I wouldn't jump too quickly into the, let's find some other use, because Link's not open, and I think that there's, there's still some, some time there.
I agree. We have a great story to tell with everything there. And you make a good point, because we have come across a restaurateur or two that doesn't want to be a tenant. They want to own. So that's a good point.
Also, Main Street has been trying to market this with, hey, look what's going to be here in the future. But, you know, until it is there, the tenant really doesn't know what the, what it's going to be. And once they see it, yeah, as Brent points out, Stacy, it's, it's going to sell itself, I'm sure. So I wouldn't want to give up on the plan for a sit-down restaurant, just because Main Street hasn't been able to secure a tenant.
Dr. Kretsch?
Something I've mentioned in past years is I would like us to be proactive, every property owner along one hundred and eighty-first, to be talking to them, seeing what they have in mind, give them the vision, the picture, the what could be, how could your property fit with this fantastic thing happening in downtown Kenmore? Not like wait for them to do something, but like, like give it a little shock to get it going. Just an encouragement, a picture, build the, you know, the vision for them to say, whoa, I think I could do really well with my property and make some money in Kenmore and, and be part of this fun thing happening.
Good. So thank you for taking us there. So when you look at those last three bullets, are there some other outcomes in addition to what Councilmember Curtis just mentioned that you'd like to see for the downtown redevelopment?
This is also getting anything like any CIP things that are scheduled? Although that's, again, transportation, but-
I've mentioned it some time before, but in it, in what Dr. Curtis has said, it contributes to it, that all the businesses along in the downtown area here could contribute to a beautification kind of a program. And I've talked about the towns that I've been through, they have these huge flower baskets all along the Main Street. It doesn't have to be something the city provides for this, the merchants really could be contributing to that sort of thing. And I remember when Bothell decided they were going to give their Main Street a faceless stift, and, and they talked about all sorts of themes. And what they already came up with was everybody was going to invest in a certain kind of awning over their entrance that blended together, and it gave it a little different ambiance. And the city then took the street and zigzagged it down to give it a little slower traffic and a little more interest. But there are things that could be done between the city and the merchants, along those lines, I would think. Beautification things along the whole strip, whole area, downtown area.
Any other ideas or outcomes?
So parking, I know that's a concern. A lot of folks are asking me, how are you going to park everybody that's coming, going to come to your wonderful downtown? And I've got mixed feelings about it. And we just created forty-plus new on-street parking spaces. And so I'd like to see how those shake out and how those get used. Been toying with the idea of building a municipal parking lot. But again, I got mixed feelings about that, too. So a candidate could be the Shell property, at least as an interim municipal parking lot. It wouldn't be for parking hiders. It would be for downtown business, downtown businesses and their customers. But right now, our code doesn't allow for a standalone parking lot. So if we wanted to do a municipal parking lot, which a lot of touristy cities have, then we'd need to change our code.
Jim?
For a number of years in the city of Bothell, I served on the off-street parking board. And the purpose of that was to help with parking codes, parking requirement codes, but also to set policy for the, what they called in lieu of parking fees. And if merchants, businesses wanted to do something of a piece of property and there wasn't enough parking for it, they, rather than supplying the parking and buying more property for their customers to park in and to satisfy the code, they could pay a fee to the city. And when the city got enough money in this in lieu of parking fund, then they would buy a lot and build a parking lot. And there are a couple of them in the city of Bothell now that came from those funds. I don't know whether we have that sort of alternative to satisfying a parking requirement for commercial development, that you can pay into a fund that would go towards such a municipal parking garage. But it'd be a long time coming, I would think. You were familiar with that up in Bothell, weren't you? Brian?
I was. I was familiar with it in Bothell. And we don't currently have a program like that in Kenmore, except for our pilot program that we introduced last year in the regional business zone. And that program was similar to what you're talking about. It required people who took advantage of it to pay the seventy-five hundred dollars a year, up to five years. And that money would go towards, be used for funding a potential parking lot.
Is that, is that going to go right into our general fund? Or what are we doing with that, that seventy-five hundred dollars?
We haven't collected that money yet, but if we did, were we to collect it, I'd probably ask the same question to Joanne.
So how-
We, we would put it in a trust fund. We would not put it in a general fund. We would put it in a fund where we put security deposits and performance bonds, things like that, that is not spent or budgeted for.
So, how, because we have, don't we have two or three, at least a couple of businesses that are taking advantage of that program? So how do we not have a fee?
We don't have any businesses that have taken advantage of the program.
Oh.
They've kind of worked around their, their conditions and haven't necessarily changed the use. That would quite, trigger the parking requirements or the impact fee requirements.
So that'll all be coming in your memo, I assume?
It's already been sent.
Okay.
Anything else on downtown redevelopment?
I would want us to be cautious before going forward with taking up valuable space and turning it into car storage in our downtown. I think we really need to let things shake out over the next probably couple of years to see how the time-limited parking works out. We may have to tweak that a bit, maybe put in some half-hour spots and some hour spots and things like that to really kind of keep people moving around a bit. But, you know, and I think of places that are really vibrant. I don't think of places that have large standalone parking lots. I think if, you know, you go down to Kirkland by Market Street there, and, you know, you circle around for a bit, but you find a parking spot, and then you wander around through this really vibrant area that isn't just dominated by, by asphalt. And I think that's a huge thing that makes an area really walkable and, and gets people going from small business to small business. So I would be really cautious before we go down that road of looking at a parking garage, unless we can find some really good mixed-use sort of situation to make it usable, to leverage it more, you know, than just, I don't know, find some sort of, maybe there's a way to marry that with some sort of, I don't know, I need to think about it, but it's just, I worry about dedicating prime space to something like that.
Yeah, me too.
Unless there's some other nexus.
What I'm worried about is, let's say we get to mid-2017, maybe, end of seventeen, and the link is fully built and occupied, the Town Green's going great, maybe even the restaurant's in. And then parking is terrible, and nobody can find a parking space. I'm worried that the business owners, our citizens, are going to come to me and go, Rob, what the heck were you thinking? And I'll say, well, I just wanted to wait to see how things shaked out, or shook out. And they'll say, well, no, you should have planned ahead. I'm leaning towards letting things shake out. That's where I'm leaning. But others may say, why did you wait to let things shake out? You should have planned ahead and seen this coming.
It just kind of reminds me of, I think it was Yogi Berra who said, nobody goes there anymore, it's too crowded, you know? If it's hard to find a parking space, then we are succeeding, because there are people that are using it.
Bike place market.
And if you take, exactly. And if we end up taking away, I mean, I don't know if we're going to ever use the Shell spa, the Shell property for, say, landing on a, for a pedestrian overpass or something like that. But if we decide not to go down that route, it'd be a shame to have this piece of property that is valuable and could be contributing to the property tax base and the sales tax base, and use it for a, you know, for what, for this, on the city side will be a money loser in the long run. You know, I see the benefits for the businesses, but, or the possible benefits for the business, but I'd rather be spending that money on making, on giving people other ways to get to the downtown, to make it more accessible for folks living in, living in the surrounding neighborhoods, rather than contributing, frankly, to the congestion that we have by encouraging more folks to get in their car and make that the attractive way to get there.
Both the deputy mayor and Councilmember Curtis wanted to speak up.
The factor that we're not considering here is how technology's going to change how people travel. And it just might be by the end of seventeen, eighteen, that people won't be using their private vehicles. They'll be calling autonomous Uber cars to take them down here. And, and we won't need the parking. And even today, Kemper Freeman is planning to redo the striping in the garage behind Bellevue Square for smaller autonomous vehicles only. And the spaces will be two feet narrow. You don't have to open the doors if they let you out in front of Nordstrom. And so things like that will change, and we may not need the kind of parking facilities that we, we think we might. But as, as, as things change with technology, I mean, after all, ten years ago, Huda Funk would be accessing the world from a little thing like this. I think there weren't many people that thought we'd be doing anything other than having flip phones. And here we are, ten years later, with what this does for us. Mine isn't doing anything, it's battery stead.
It's going to happen to those self-driving cars, too. So in a lower-tech world, we will be adding parking along the south side of 181st this year and the north side next year. So we'll have quite a few more parking spots in the next two years.
So maybe we ought to look at repurposing some, some property. Maybe there's some acquisitions that could be made, maybe we could repurpose part of the City Hall property to put structured parking or something that could contribute to downtown. I certainly, given the current downtown development guidelines, I certainly don't see parking on that Shell station as being really a good use for that. So I would like to see perhaps some other, some other possibilities explored.
I just worry, you know, if we keep planning based on kind of this old model of everybody in their car going everywhere they're going by themselves, that it will bite us in 10, 20 years. We have a generation of people coming up right now who are buying cars at a, at the lowest rate in the history, you know, since like the 50s. Millennials just aren't buying cars, some of them aren't even getting licenses. So I think if we continue to plan as if it's the 1990s, we, we will, we will regret it in 20, 30 years, so.
Okay. And Brad?
I know how we can double our parking with very little effort in the city by having more motorcycle striped parking spots. It will encourage people to jump on their motorcycle and their scooter and come into town, so that's my thought.
And I don't, I don't see so many single people coming into town as I do families coming into town to partake in the restaurants and in the town green and other things, so.
I think there'll always be the multi-passenger vans that are carting kids to ballgames and the Little League stuff and then going out for ice cream at the local Dairy Queen or whatever we have here.
So, so you do have, as your fourth bullet under downtown, accommodate parking, so what do you, in light of this discussion that we just had, what do you see as an outcome to accommodate parking?
I'll just jump in because Jim's reading his notes. I think that the direction we're going with the parallel parking on the street is great because that, that says downtown, that, you know, creates that nice barrier between the road and the, the walkway or the sidewalk, so people have that, that sense of protection. And I think it also slows people down because you're, you, you get that narrowing, you get, you know, I actually don't know how to parallel park, so this is my true confession here, I really don't know how to do it, that's another story. But, you know, you still, I mean, there's, you have to slow down. So to me, that says downtown and you want those cues and that's, that says downtown. Large, wide, open surface parking lots don't say downtown. So I think that, that would be what, what I, my takeaway from this.
My thought is, if, we've just added 40 units of parking now, by the time we add both sides of 181st, I think we can wait and evaluate. And if it really is an emergency, that we really made a bad decision and we didn't plan ahead, we could, as a council, decide to put some temporary parking down there on the, the old Shell lot until we build something big. And it might be, you know, part of our loop, travel around the city idea with little trolleys, it might not be downtown. It could be somewhere else along that loop where you put your parking structure and people get on the cute little trolley and then come downtown. So it, it wouldn't necessarily have to take valuable downtown place.
Might, might take advantage of an existing parking lot, like a church parking lot in a neighborhood.
Right.
Another, another thing that I think we should address is the, the, I don't know whether zoning requirements or development requirements, whatever, the number of parking stalls per residence in multifamily housing. And I was just talking to Rob about it today and I think we, we said that there's one stall, is it one parking place per unit in the things going in across the street? There's some talk about even reducing that to .6 and TODs and, and if, if we're not going to be driving cars, then you really don't need that many parking places. But is that realistic? And I think we have a test model across the street here now, that if they went with one per unit, are, are their tenants having just one car? Are there some of those units that have no cars? Are they, and I've heard a rumor that they actually rent the, the residential unit and then you have to rent the parking place, too. And if people don't want to pay the extra for the parking place, they park on the street.
I can actually answer that question. I had a discussion just Friday night with two people, they're brothers, and they rent a two-bedroom in the Spencer 68 and they are having to pay through the nose for a second spot because they want to each be able to park a car and it's, they've got one that comes with it and then they're having to pay, and I don't even know what the surcharge was, but that was the only way they were going to be able to do it. And, and it was just interesting talking about, because they did say it's, they told me it was a problem for a lot of the tenants in there. And so, anyway, I just wanted to answer that, I have more comments on it when you're done, though.
Yeah, well, I just, I'm just thinking that we could, here's the situation with new housing and a rather limited amount of parking for that housing, and is it working out? Or is there, are there more vehicles associated with the tenants there than they can supply parking for and that's part of our parking problem on the street? There are lots of cars all the way up 185th that weren't there a few years ago. And I don't know whether they're people from the condos right there at the corner where, where Councilmember Herbig lives, or whether they're, during the day, I'm sure they're commuters that stack up there, but this is all night long, all the way up and down those streets, so.
Laurie, did you want to respond to this?
I did, yeah. But if the pattern is the same, the street I live on, there's 116 units of townhomes, people park all the way up the street. And, you know, I mean, whether, those have garages, but, you know, people don't often, they may have more apartment storage and all that stuff, so, you know, without, I don't think you have to do a lot of research, I mean, that's, you know, basically, the change occurred when people did that.
But I think what I was driving at was that the trend has been to have fewer parking spaces per residential unit because the trend is, we hope, fewer people driving cars and taking public transportation or whatever. Now, is that realistic, at least in the near term? And are we, are we contributing more to a problem with our, with our regulations or parking requirements being too lenient or too few per, per unit? And maybe we should revisit that here in the next, next couple of years. And maybe, maybe we don't want to go in the direction of fewer parking spaces, at least not yet.
Why don't you go first, because I think, are you bringing up a bigger, different, a little bit different issue?
I, I think maybe we need to review the high, the high cost of free parking that we, it was part of kind of the discussion that we had a couple of years ago around, what was the name of that book that you had us all read two years ago?
Walkable Cities?
Yeah, Walkable Cities. I mean, I don't want to go totally in the weeds on this, but there's a lot of costs associated with parking, too. If you want to have an affordable city, forcing everybody who, you know, every new unit to take on an additional $20,000 to $50,000 in cost to build, to build an additional parking spot takes away from that affordability and adds to the cost. There are also people who live there, part of the reason why they charge for parking is there are people who live there who don't need it. And if you don't charge for parking, then you are essentially making the non-drivers subsidize the parking spots for the drivers in the apartment, in the, you know, in the apartments. So it's a really complex issue and I, I would be very reluctant to reopen that and force more parking on places because it really would affect the affordability and the cost of development in the city.
What we're seeing is the amount that they're supplying isn't sufficient and it's causing an overload on the parking on the street.
I would argue that-
You're displacing the cost from the, from the local homeowner, or the property owner to the public.
I would argue that no developer's going to develop something that won't sell or rent and they're going to build the amount of parking that they need to fulfill their market need. Us forcing them to build extra, extra parking is detriment, you know, it eats into their profits or it raises the costs for, for people to, to, to live there or work there or, so, and I don't see any harm in people using the street, the street spaces around my neighborhood at night. I mean, that's kind of what they're there for, otherwise it'd just be empty concrete.
Yeah, but there's only so much empty concrete.
Right, but we just added 40 more spaces. I mean, there's, I think there's plenty, I mean-
You're talking about a municipal garage.
I'm not talking about municipal garage. No, I mean, I, there's always a few spaces.
There's a need for more parking.
I, I don't know, I think, I think once we're done with everything here, we need to take a look because I think, you know, I drive by at night, there's still spaces in front of the skate park most nights, there's still spaces in front of City Hall at nine o'clock. So, you know, I don't, there's an urge to build for the peak need for parking, but that only is used a couple hours of the day. And if you build for the peak, then you're raising a bunch of costs to just fulfill that one peak time. Anyway, like I said, I don't want to get in the weeds on it, I just, I, I think there's a lot of factors that we really need to think through before we push additional parking requirements on people, because I think there's some detrimental side-
We need to talk about it from that standpoint, as well as where do people park, who want to go to town green.
Oh, right, and that's why you have the time-limited parking spaces, too, so people can't just clog them up all day.
But here we are, creating parking spots in this area and we're taking them away, street parks, street parking in other places.
Like, like on 80th and 182nd?
And on Juanita, I mean, on, on Simon's Road, 170th. We're taking it away from the homeowners up there. We're reconfiguring streets, we're adding parking in some places and getting rid of it altogether in others.
Can I say one more thing about parking? And that is, the businesses, the businesses around here, obviously, they want tons of parking. And I don't know about Nancy, but one of the top questions I get from the business community around here is, "Hey, when all this comes online, what are you going to do about parking?" And Brian and I met with Kenmore Camera a few weeks ago to talk to them about the intersection. I thought that's what we were going to go to talk to them about, but they spent the first three quarters of the meeting talking about the parking crisis and how terrible it was going to be when everything comes online and what were we going to do about it? So, and then at the end of the conversation, we talked about the intersection. But I just want you to know that there is a concern out there about the parking and in, in some folks' minds, a, hey, look, we're just going to take a wait-and-see approach and maximize on-street parking, that might not be enough in some people's minds.
So I, I do think on the, on the parking for the developers, I mean, if we had no parking requirements, they'd still build them and they'd still rent them, I mean, they, or sell them or whatever they want, because there's, there'd be a market, but all it's doing, it's shifting that burden to the cities to figure out where those cars are going to park and to other neighborhoods that all of a sudden they've got them in their neighborhood. I don't think it's unreasonable to think about having some type of a city-owned municipal piece of land or something right off the, out of the core that could be used for parking and maybe it's just surface now and maybe 10 years from now, it may need a structure or 10 years from now, we might not feel like we need it and then it can be put to a different use. But when you really do look at the TOD and the way it's, it's zoned out, when these densities start happening, if they start happening, you know, that, there's going to be a lot of vehicles, even if it's, even, you know, decreases a certain percentage every year of people that have vehicles, it'll still be a heavy burden for parking and to me, it's, I think, I guess, I think it's a little bigger issue maybe than some of you, but I, I wouldn't want to see it go away because I, I do think there's going to be a need here and the longer we wait, it'll probably be that much more expensive to figure out what the solution is.
Just a comment, that there is a balance between density and the, the bus service that's made available to us. So the, sort of which comes first is sometimes not in your control. So if you have a lot of density, then the bus, folks say, you know, every 10-minute bus service, that works great. It fills up our buses and we're all happy. Because if there isn't the density, there's no reason to be providing that kind of service. So I'd, I'd say, you know, let's encourage density and we'll, you know, some of it will be taken care of because people will transfer to public transportation and other we may have to deal with. And I think we have enough options, including, you know, getting property that's not in the core and figuring out how to, how to make that all work. So I think we can just stay flexible, but not plan on a big structure for now, or even in the foreseeable future.
So one thing my coworkers, especially Nancy, have been bugging me to do for a while now, is to do a parking study for our downtown. One thought is to let things come online and soon thereafter, commission a parking study and have a sophisticated firm come and look at parking patterns and parking needs and make some recommendations. Could that be something that would be interesting?
As long as they're sophisticated.
Because a few minutes ago, you were, seemed like the one thing you were agreeing on was this concept of kind of wait a little bit to see how things play out, whether it's the monitoring of the 40 new on-site, on-street parking spaces or finishing 181st and looking how that happens or letting some of these other developments get built and see what happens. Then the parking study would come after that. What does that cost?
A couple of years ago, we were looking at 50 grand.
Both Stacy and Laurie had-
Yeah, I think, I think waiting a little bit might be a good idea, just to, there are a lot of spaces, I think, under that Link building that people don't realize are there. And, you know-
Yep.
It might not be bad to wait just a little bit, but, you know, we, my gut feel is we'll have to do something about it. And one thing I don't want to lose also is, as much as I like walkable downtowns, walkable cities, a lot of our residents are going to want to come down here who really do need to bring a car down here, there's no sidewalks, the weather is what it is and it's really hilly, so that there's a lot of people who just aren't going to walk and bike in our neighborhoods just realistically, so, something to keep in mind.
Yeah, I think a lot of what you're hearing from the businesses is, is basically that fear, you know, there's change coming, it's going to be bad. Well, we don't know that it's going to be bad and result in, in, you know, parking that, that's not available for their customers. And people are forgetting that this whole parking lot is closed off now, so that's all been, you know, taken away from the supply. And just as, as Councilmember Januzki said, they're also forgetting that there's a whole parking garage in this Link building and a parking lot on the back and it's, it's designed to offset, you know, the residents and the businesses. So there's a lot of capacity there that I, I think that maybe it's not apparent. At the same time, I, my recollection of our, of the, the way the parking, the surface parking agreement is shared amongst the businesses, and so that, I think is going to be the key thing. And I know that the library has had, you know, challenges, having, accommodating for some of their events and things like that. So again, you know, I, I do think a lot of what you're hearing is that fear of, it's going to be bad, you know, there's people parking on the street now, it's just going to go crazy. And we just don't know that. So I think we'll know a lot more as this progresses and then we'll, you know, we will deal with it.
When does the outer parking lot open back up? It's going to be open when Town Green is online this fall or is that going to still be fenced off or do you not know?
You're talking about the main parking lot?
Main parking lot.
Brian might have a better answer.
They're going to start construction on it this, this month and it should be wrapped up in, I'd say, two or three months.
Okay.
Question, they're doing something over there and I think it's on, on Kenmore Camera's property, where they brought in a lot of dirt and they've built it up, I guess to the end of their property. They, what are the plans? What are they, why are they doing that?
Well, part of the agreement was to redo Kenmore Camera's parking lot, so the restriping, the resurfacing includes their property and Kenmore Cameras. It's just going to have a whole new layout when they're done, new sidewalks, interior sidewalks.
Okay. Well, they've added about two feet of dirt that comes out just past the front of the post office, and that drops off. I'm just curious as to what the goal is to do that. Are they going to put a retaining wall there? Because they're not, they're not encroaching on the restaurant pad, is essentially where they stopped it. And it just doesn't look like it makes sense.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and take a look at their plans, and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm hearing on accommodate parking is maximize on-street parking and take a wait-and-see approach, knowing that that, that approach isn't going to make everybody happy?
Yeah, and if we need to jump in and do something quickly, the Shell property doing something interim, you know, even just gravel lot type thing, might be a good interim solution.
Wait-and-see, I don't think we mean do nothing, but we can see now and monitor things as we go along, and what's gone in across the street is a bit of an indicator as to what might, the future might hold.
I mean, we've got to do more than wait and see, because if we wait to see, I mean, a year could be down the road, and all of a sudden, something needs to be done. But we haven't sort of halfway planned, right, and take another year for things to come online, so.
But I actually kind of like what Councilmember Danuski said, monitor the situation, and if we need to act quickly, on an interim basis, we can do something to the Shell property temporarily, meaning for a number of years, until we're ready to use it for pedestrian overpass, or whatever.
I think there's a difference in wait and do nothing versus wait and monitor.
Yeah.
So as long as we're monitoring, then we can say, whoa, this is working great, or this isn't working so great, and then we'll, we'll take action. So it doesn't mean we don't watch. Because once all that, the parking garage and other things come online, and we get that middle of that parking open again, I think we'll have a better idea of what's going on.
One specific item that just kind of occurred to me, if people are being charged to park for that extra space in the, in the new units, then I think it's going to be really key to make sure that, that people are using the business parking as the free parking, you know, and taking away from the businesses versus, you know, parking in there. So that's, I think, going to be really key to monitor that, and make sure that that's not being.
One other thing, Mike, there's the possibility of public-private partnerships, too. And got a big piece of property over here that could be an improved parking lot if we work together with the owner. Either we work with them, or Transit works with them, or all three. And yes, it's two blocks off the main drag, but so is our parking lot right here.
But I mean, if this, if Town Green and this whole complex is as successful as what we're anticipating, I can't help believe that some of this other property around, like the Shell property, is also going to become very valuable, that turning it into a parking lot may not be the best decision. So I certainly want to remain somewhat flexible on that.
Is that where the possibility of the parking study comes in?
Pardon?
Is that where the possibility of the parking study comes in? So if you're trying to maximize on-street parking, and monitor, and wait, and then the interim solutions, and then?
Well, I mean, we're kind of shooting in the dark here. Sit and watch and wait, and kind of be ready. But, I mean, certainly a parking study would certainly arm us with a little bit more concrete information that could be utilized. At least we'd be better off starting that, that study now, where we're sort of watching to see what would happen. So at least we've got a direction that has been recommended, and we can follow up on, rather than waiting and seeing for a year, and then sort of shooting from the hip. So, I mean, I certainly think a parking study is something we ought to be seriously considering.
I'd be inclined to not do this parking study now. I think there will be as much speculation and unknown with a fancy company and study as we have now. So at least we need to let the stuff come online, and then we can make more intelligent decisions, whether it's our own people, or some expensive consultant.
I think the word was sophisticated.
Sophisticated, yeah. That sounded like.
Means expensive.
Sophisticated equals expensive, is kind of how I heard that story. So I was going to say, we need more data, and right now, we just need to wait till some things come online.
I just want to say that I agree with what Councilmember Curtis said there. I think if we panic and overdo something, we could, we could regret it later. And, and yeah, I don't, I can't imagine a parking study happening right now would really give us anything meaningful until things are actually more built out, and we have a better idea of how it's going to be used. So I would urge us to wait.
Yes, I think we're having a problem with verb tense. Wait and see sounds too passive. We're going to watch and monitor the situation closely.
Okay, good.
And I might also point out that Bothell's new City Hall, right on the eve of getting started on and approving of, the council approved one hundred more parking stalls, another level in there of parking stalls. So a hundred parking stalls at fifty grand apiece, that's five million dollars for parking, right? And there's been a lot of concern about it, and, but they decided they needed that, that public parking.
That's the only place I've been able to get to McMinimans.
Huh?
That's the only place I've been able to park and get to McMinimans, is in that garage.
So just remember, there's a lot of people around here that may not be sophisticated, but they're very smart. And we saw that example a number of years ago, when some local kid started this little company that everybody thought he was crazy for, right, that programmed signals for the city of Seattle. And it's now Microsoft. Wasn't sophisticated back then.
He was a dropout.
Just, I'm going to move you ahead now. Is there any need to talk about the housing affordability outcomes? Because you did identify a few before.
I kind of think we talked about that.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay. How about, last night, you were talking about retention and recruitment in a competitive marketplace of employees, and you heard a little bit about Brian's challenges in his own department, so, Nigel?
I would say, and I talked about this this morning, I think we'll probably do another salary survey in the next year.
Well, this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else? Any other outcomes, or is that?
I think we talked about it a bit last night. Not sure we need to cover it much more now.
Yeah, I thought we had a good discussion last night, too, and I appreciated Councilmember Curtis's point about the cost of turnover, because that's a cost that, if you're constantly having to fill positions. I guess the one thing that I came away with is more of a almost a suggestion, you know, I know that the permit reviewer, is that plan reviewer? I'm not sure, the permit tech, permit specialist, has been a challenge for the, for the city and to fill that. And it sounded like that because it was term limited, in terms of just the year, that that may have been the, the challenge. And so, you know, I guess my thought would be, I mean, that would be an easy win, is to make it something that was permanent. But obviously, that has budget implications, and then, you know, it also runs the risk of having to say to somebody, we don't have work for you. So, you know, there's two sides to it. But if it's a barrier to keeping somebody good, and you're constantly spending the money to retrain, and then having the challenges of not, you know, having the work done, you know, that's kind of a high price to pay for.
Yeah, it is.
When Kenmore hits forty thousand people, we cannot need a permit person.
And we may have talked about this one, too. There's two more, but remember, I'm just going to skip to the part about allocating funding for maintenance, whether it's parks, roads, City Hall, Town Green, but I think, have you talked about that sufficiently? Are there other outcomes you wanted to point out?
Well, can I, I'm sorry, I didn't speak up on employees, but I think there's things we can do to add value to the compensation package without costing additional money or significant money. One is looking at what Kirkland does. Again, what little I do know about it, I think they've added value for the employees and saved money. And so there's things that I'd like to look at the benefits packages on, where, where we can do that. And they might be minor, or they might be something like Kirkland did.
Have we ever thought about looking? I mean, I don't know if we offer this. Do we offer ore capaces to employees who want to bus to work?
No, we don't, right?
Were you thought about that at all? I mean, I know, we talk about the crunch of parking at City Hall on occasion. That might be one day, one way to kind of, there might be some folks who would bus, I don't know where our employees live, but I'd just have to look at.
But another thing that I've been meaning to do, and I haven't even talked to Joanne about this, but our, our 401A plan, it's a defined contribution plan. We immediately vest on it, right? There's no waiting period. Well, even if you had three years vesting on the city contribution, because the city contributes about six percent, and if you had three years vesting where you don't get the city money until you're here for three years, that's kind of an employee retention tool.
Absolutely.
Give them, make them think twice, and, and I can't remember which city I worked for, either Gig Harbor or University Place, if they did leave and forfeit that money, the money went back, got distributed to the employees that were left standing. And.
The consequences there.
So, anyway, just simple things like, simple things like that, that don't cost anything, I want to look at. We just haven't had time, because we don't.
You mentioned that before, about the vesting period. I thought that was a great idea of just another tool to help.
Most of the general plans are that way.
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
Okay, so I think, I was just saying, it sounded like you had discussed the allocating funding for maintenance quite a bit, identifying different outcomes, but was there anything else under that? That'll be kind of like the new number eight, so it's at the very bottom of the page, but we had talked about it under both transportation, Lake Point, even the walkways and waterways bond.
And, and so if I can make the discussion more difficult on number eight, you know, I actually am seeing a new funding source for all these projects that are coming online. And it could be tapping into banked capacity, it could be increasing utility taxes with an accompanying rebate for low income. I don't know what it is yet, but you may see a recommendation for me for a new revenue source in the next biennium. As you saw from our chart, we may not need to have it go into effect in seventeen, or maybe not even in eighteen. But just know that that's going to be a tough issue I'm going to be most likely bringing up.
And then, is there anything to talk about, in terms of outcomes for maintaining a level of savings and reserves?
Okay, do you want to take a couple minute break? There's still, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I go slow, because I want them to say something before I do. But I think, if I can speak for you, but I think you have one, you have a minimum fund balance of twenty percent for the general fund and street funds, so an outcome would be to be, have at least that much. But that, but also, maybe you don't want them to decline either significantly. But if that's the case, then you're setting it way above twenty percent. And then the other thing is, just keep replenishing strategic ops. We've been able to withdraw from it, and then at the end of each biennium, because of conservative budgeting, we've been able to replenish it back. And so I think two things, when it comes to your savings, reserves, either stay above twenty, or don't let them drop. Those are two different things in my mind. And then the third one is, keep replenishing strategic ops at the two-point-five-million-dollar level.
I would also say that there's one of the funds, I think it was Road or something, that was like seventy-eight percent, and it doesn't have to be that high. I'd really be happier to get that down. So, so I wouldn't say I want to hold all of them the same. I think we need to let that one go down and use the money for something more useful than having that level of reserves.
Like a one-time sidewalk gap program, or something?
Happy with the pattern that, that has been occurring, where, you know, like you said, replenishing the strategic opportunity fund, and then making use of fund balance amounts above the twenty percent of the adopted reserve for the one-time things. I think the sidewalks, and using those for matching grants, that was a really good use of that. So I think that's one of the beauties, having some of those reserves at this point, gives us some of the flexibility to take opportunities. What I would not want to see, and I know that it's not going to happen, but I'm just going to state it, is obviously using the fund balances to fund, fund sort of, you know, ongoing multiple things, rather than, you know, keeping the expenses and the, and the revenue sources matched for ongoing. But I'm pleased with the way it's been going, and I don't, you know, I think the twenty percent level is, is a good, healthy level to keep the fund balances at.
So, back on the seventy-eight percent, that, I think, you were seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent, you're talking about the Road Fund, in surplus. We were just talking last night about how we've been applying most of that funding to arterials, and we have not been paying much attention to residential streets. So, could that seventy-nine percent surplus go to improving the condition of our residential streets, and, or what am I missing here?
So there's, that's another, well, I see anything in fund balance or reserves, if you wanted to use it, it could only be for a one-time thing. To put it into operations is not that great. But could you take a chunk of that and use it to chip-seal a bunch of residential streets? You bet, you could. Could you use that money to fill in some sidewalk gaps? You bet. So that's probably a budget discussion. If you want to tap into that reserve and put it to work, then that, we should have that discussion in the fall.
So, that would be like a maintenance issue, though. Wouldn't you say that would, that would fall into more, something like what Laurie was just talking about, if we were doing that? But, and if I recall, the balance was about, it's roughly a million dollars in the street fund?
Like eight hundred.
Or eight hundred. So it's not, I get, yeah, so it's not a, I mean, it's relative to our budget, even if it is at seventy-eight percent, it's not a huge amount of dollars that we have.
We're talking several hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right. But the other thing I was going to say is, we know with whatever happens at Lake Point, there's probably going to be some requirements that we're going to need dollars for matching grants or funds. And so I wouldn't be averse to just trying to use, at least maintain that balance a little bit, knowing that there's going to be a need there that we know is inevitable, if Lake Point happens.
Isn't the Rose maintenance budget, isn't that over a million a year, to maintain what we've currently been doing?
Yeah, the street fund is about one-point-one million a year.
Right, so eight hundred thousand, then, in surplus, is not even a year's worth of maintenance.
That was my point. It's not, it's not so much money that we're carrying on the books.
It's seventy-five, whatever percent of the annual, that's, that's where we're getting this percentage. It's not seventy-five percent more than anybody needs.
It's just the amount of money you have sitting in cash reserves for that fund.
Which means I can partially fund next year without worrying.
You could what?
Partially fund next year without worrying.
Should we take a break for a couple of minutes? And then, because we still have one other conversation to have, too. So why don't we come back at, like in five minutes, about three minutes date? A chance to meet with the management team to talk a little bit about this biennial budget retreat. And one of the things we talked about is how there are various initiatives that are significant and that could also just alter the approach to doing business. And you've heard about most of the ones that the management team mentioned to me in that meeting, like last night Chris mentioning the Public Works Services Assessment. And then one other one was talking a little bit about the salary analysis. Well, you've just said that an outcome should be a salary survey, and we also talked a little bit about the impact of development, and I think that both last night with Brian talking to you a little bit about some of the challenges he faces, and some of the things that you just said tonight, we've kind of talked about that. So I guess I would just ask you, are there any other initiatives that you see as changing the approach to doing business in the city? And maybe making things more effective or more efficient? But just being able to think a little bit about even the priorities you've talked about tonight, and how the city conducts business, and just wanting to talk a little bit about, does this portend some changes in how the city conducts its business? Sir?
I don't know whether we, I think we mentioned a little bit yesterday, but the potential for another recession or downturn economically. And if we can keep an eye on things and try to, well, who can anticipate what's going to happen with the economy? But if we could at least be nimble on our feet and respond as rapidly as possible rather than all of a sudden saying we're in deep doo-doo and then having to make some radical changes. I think we weathered the last storm quite well, and we took a lot of proactive steps in cutting expenses and didn't have to reduce payroll. In fact, we increased payroll through that.
And Councilmember Cruz?
My comment is similar. You know, on those really big, long, steep roads, they have those runaways for the trucks to go up? And so I guess I'll, I'm thinking of that way from our budget. So I want to proceed, but in case the whole economy crashes, I want to make sure we don't have big projects halfway through. So we like have enough money to finish stuff that we've started, and we have a safe runaway so we don't get caught with a bunch of half-finished stuff.
So like fallback plans or Plan Bs?
Yeah, so, because if you have too many big things going, and you don't finish any of them if the whole economy crashes, and we're not saying that's going to happen, but I like to have that sort of feeling, like if things really go bad, I'm still going to be okay. So like keep things enough kind of linear. So I understand we multitask, but if you have too many projects all going at the same time, and then the economy crashes and everything suddenly sits, and the big cranes are sitting there in the ground with big holes, and everything stops, it just doesn't look good. So if you have one project that ceases, you're better than having three big projects that all stop at the same time.
Any other initiatives you can think of, or anything else about just being aware of how business is conducted and changes and being prepared?
Well, so if walkways and waterways takes off, and Lake Point takes off, some other big things take off, it will behoove us to have a 21st century financial system to, there we go.
I thought we decided on that one.
Yeah.
Our chisel has to go away, huh?
Yeah.
We already said yes to that.
Yeah, I thought we already decided that.
You did, and so, and Joanne's in the process of implementing it, but.
Yeah, no, that is going to be a big deal.
I'm in the process of negotiating a contract. So hopefully we'll wrap that up this month, and then we'll start implementing.
Is that going to be a lot of staff time, and, I mean, to bring in a new system like that? That's a pretty significant situation for a lot of people.
Well, yeah, and so Joanne's doing that, and you want to have that done by year's end, right?
I'd like to.
This year.
And we're in a budget year, too. Yeah, and we're in a budget year. And so she's, her plate is full.
We may bring in some folks to free up finance staff time so that we can do the implementation.
Great.
But we haven't.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hopefully, you know, obviously there's an investment in terms of getting this, but hopefully it'll be a tool that'll pay off in terms of, you know, everybody's work and everybody's thing, so.
That's my hope, across the organization, I mean, from Chris's point of view, from Debbie's point of view, and Brian, everyone who's managing a project or tracking their budgets or their expenditures or their contracts, this should create some really significant efficiencies.
That's wonderful, that's great.
So this is then going to tie into Brian's department with permits and fees coming in, and with the online system that we're using with Bellevue? Is that going to tie in and feed data into it?
We'll build in an integration so that we won't have to redo all of their transactions and financial software, right.
And Kathleen, what she gets at the front desk, the little things that's going to go right into the system, so.
Correct.
Wonderful.
One question I have, is this going to be versatile enough to change with the times? I mean, we've been talking about, you know, how this works and how transportation may change. How about finances? Might 10, five years from now? Might we just, who knows?
From everything that we have seen and investigated regarding this company, the answer is yes. The product that we're implementing was developed about 20 years ago, and it has evolved from being green screen type applications and DOS to becoming Windows-based applications that we're implementing now. And they have a evergreen philosophy is what they call it, that they will always be refreshing and updating their software to keep up with the current and most, the most forward technology.
That will be available to us for a maintenance basis, right?
Pardon?
That will be available for a maintenance fee rather than having to repurchase.
Correct, correct. We'll pay an annual maintenance fee that will provide for all upgrades, fixes, patches, et cetera. Moving to a new system, you won't have to completely reinvest in another, another significant purchase.
How about the cybersecurity of it?
It's, it's very highly recommended.
Okay.
There's multiple layers of security that can be assigned to every aspect for access, for reading, for reporting.
Councilmember Cruz?
Just a comment, my impression is we underspend in IT. In the hospitals in general, they assume 2% to 4% of their budget is IT. We have dozens of lean projects going at all times. There is no project that can happen without IT. Literally, it is that true. So I think you're being really cautious in your spending, and more might even be better, but we don't need to put that in the budget.
I wrote that down. I understand, thank you.
And you have witnesses, so.
If you want to do 10 lean projects at a time, you're going to need more IT resources.
Oh, yeah, I always have more. But I wanted to refer to you. But, so like if Lake Point comes online and really starts getting going, I'm going to need to have an A-team on that, consultants, staff, and recruiting and retaining that A-team is going to be really important for a project like Lake Point. Lake Point is a big city project, and it's happening in a small town, so.
Don't we have the leader in place already?
What's that?
Don't we have the leader in place already? With Ben?
With Ben as a consultant? Yeah, yeah, so he's an example of A-team, and, so, but that, he's not, yeah, but there's much bigger team than just.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, it's start.
So Rob, are you saying that that'll be something we're going to see, actually see in the budget, some budget, budgeting for the Lake Point consultants and?
Yeah, but I want to, I want the developer to pay for it as much as possible.
Absolutely, okay. That makes sense, okay.
But, yeah, we're going to have to have star players on this team.
Can you tell us, so at what point do you, what is the tipping point here where you need to have more than like Ben working with you?
I don't know, you guys are welcome to help me out if you want on that, but.
You know, it really comes down to their actions, you know, their applications, what they come in with, how they phase it, and what that looks like. If they phase it to be a, a transportation issue, then we can adjust and bring in people for that. If it's an environmental issue, we can adjust that way. But really, it just comes down, right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern to see their actions and what they're going to be doing.
I can see if they're submitting plans and we're in the heat of development agreement negotiations, I think that's when we're going to, you know, need to have the, be operating on all eight cylinders, so.
I was going to add, too, as Deputy Mayor Van Ness said, you know, how can we gear up and be ready to be in parallel with the Lake Point team? And we've done that through our parametrics contract you just recently approved, an amendment. So we have a consulting team ready to go for traffic, for environmental, we can get a geo-tech, really whatever we need from a professional services standpoint, we have the team in place to react quickly to whatever the Lake Point team provides us. Yep, they're, we structured it as an on-call agreement, so if they don't do anything, we don't pay anything. But we used them with a charrette last year, and they're available to look at technical memos. So it's a matter of writing a task, and it can be a $2,000 task or a $50,000 task, they're available through that method.
So a number of years ago, we went through, I think, all of the consultant contracts that we had. And do we have any consultants or are just on a retainer? Unlike what you had just indicated that when they don't do anything, we don't pay them. But do we have other people that are just on retainers?
Yeah, Langton Spieth, Cory Hanson, for our incubator.
But I mean, Langton Spieth does something for us, they're working right now for us. And so is Cory. I'm talking about just sitting on a retainer that are not doing anything unless we call them.
I would never allow for that.
Okay, good, that's what we found a few years ago, so I was just checking.
I'll add one thing. I would expect that at some point we will be just running full out at the federal, state, regional level for support for, you know, transportation, whatever kinds of investments we want to play a role in with Lake Point. And so even with the, the government affairs contracts that we have in place now, I could see really needing to augment that either from a in-house staffing standpoint, or bringing more horsepower to those efforts.
Somebody already said, did what I was going to.
So we also wanted to ask you, with the inquiries we've been talking about these last two meetings that you've agreed on tonight, with the city's outreach, do you have any thoughts that you want to relay to Rob and the management team in terms of any little bit different expect?
Any little different expectations for community outreach, or things that you just want to reiterate about the city's approach to working with the community in light of these different priorities and all that you've cut on your plate? Councilmember Hurbig?
I think we've actually taken on a pretty healthy culture of fostering public input, so I think if we keep the models that we've used for like Imagine Kenmore and the neighborhood transportation plans and skate park design and things like this, priority-based budgeting. Yeah, that's a good one. Oh, I missed that, what was it? Priority-based budgeting. But we've really taken on a culture of, an ethic of, you know, open houses and doing outreach and using our newsletter, our newsletter strategically, and I think we've gotten into a good habit with that, so I would hope that we would just keep all of that up.
Yes, Mayor.
You know, I think that we're doing a good job on social media, but I think that we also need to be, continue being a little bit proactive with some of the outlandish things that are going on. I'm not saying address them directly, I'm saying on our own site to make sure that the accurate information is out there and available. I know we're not going to stop all rumors, I know we're not going to stop all this, some of this negative talk that's going on, but at least we can make sure that we're providing and continue to provide the factual information that we do. I mean, everybody was buzzing when this 68th Street got restriped. And, you know, it's, it's, it's good that we are on our side, at least trying to give out factual information there, so.
Anything else you want to add to augment what Councilmember Hurbig or the mayor said?
One thing that was mentioned several years ago when the Stormwater NPDES program came into effect, one of the components of that is public education. And one of the things that some communities had done was had better signage at these projects, you know, a public, a Stormwater project, doing a redoing a drainage ditch or a culvert or whatever, just looks like a bunch of construction going on to the average Joe going by. But everybody's paying tax dollars into these funds. And so just a good readable sign by these things that says your, your Stormwater dollars are at work, and just a brief discussion, culvert repair or whatever. I think we could do more in public education that way. Because a lot of people look at construction going along the side of the road, and they see a bunch of hard hats standing still, and they wonder where their tax dollars are going. And if we can, you know, get a more positive effort going to inform the public of what good is being done. And I get it all the time with people talking about the waste in government, and I say, well, it may be out there, but it sure isn't here in Kenmore. Our people in City Hall are really working hard, and I think we need to individually have to relay that message that we're really proud of what the city is doing. And we can do it personally, we can do it with signage to inform people as to what's going on. And I think just putting it on the website, it's only getting to the people that come to that website. And I think there are other ways that we can communicate.
Councilmember Sperry?
I think Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Van Ness brings up a really good point. So if the walkways and waterways bond passes, then I think that would be a great opportunity to highlight to people that, you know, this bond issue is resulting in this project once we get to that point.
I would add one thing, if you do put up a sign, I wouldn't put the words "your tax dollars" because that to a lot of people is immediately a negative. I would just put what the project is. They know they're paying for it, but just even the word "tax" in there, some people don't get a positive image from that.
What the project is and what it's doing. The bigger picture.
Oh, the, right there. Yeah, that was Kent and Chris, yeah.
Do you realize how many people go up there and have their picture taken with Hank? There's a number of people I've seen as I drive by that stick their head through there and somebody's out taking their picture. It's amazing.
That was all Kent's idea, and then Jennifer's team helped make it happen, but, yeah, Kent's the creative one.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't know if exactly fits here, but I asked the, the team the other day, one thing that I think would help the citizens to see how we do use their money is to say, here's all the money we've used over the, you know, last 15 years or so in grant, our piece of the grant match, how much did we get for that? So, you know, we put in 10 million and we got back 90 million or whatever. It's really a return on investment, so if you use your money wisely, you're not out to just spending it, you're using it to spend other people's money. Now granted, the other people's money is theirs too, but, but it's state money, it's federal money, it's not all this landing of the citizens of Kenmore to cover bridge costs and 522 costs and all those other things. So I, I think that'd be valuable to them to see, we're really working hard to use every dollar we get carefully and wisely.
Okay, yes, sir.
So on this community thing, I just had such a blast with For the Love of Kenmore. And I think it did a lot to just build positive feelings in the community. We may not be able to put tangible dollars on what we did, tangible ROI numbers, but I just think that there was just so much community goodwill that built up from that and is still being built from that. And so I am hoping to bring back Peter Kogayama in April of '17, so it'll be two years later. And I think we could have a lot of fun with that. And, you know, it's been two years, what's happened?
It's kind of like booster shots, you give another little booster to it, get the thing up there higher.
Yeah, but, yeah, but just helping, helping, helping citizens be emotionally attached to their community and that sense of ownership and pride and everything, empowering them to take action and do fun things and create love notes for their community, definitely want to keep encouraging that.
Certainly, I think the response that we saw when he was here in, in May, it was amazing, the response that, that we got for.
Oh, for the Sound Cities or the?
Yeah, the AWC thing, right. I, that was, I had people come, different city managers coming up and talking, saying, you know, hey, if you're going, we want to piggyback on this, we want to, you're going to bring him back, we want him too. So, I mean, it's just amazing, the, the comments that we've got and the reaction that we've got from the region over, over that, so. And then he was back here earlier in the year with Bellevue Chamber of Commerce that brought him in for another talk, so it's, it, there's been a tremendous response from, from that.
Yeah, Kirkland wants to have him in November, I think, October.
Well, I, I have been, I mentioned it at the retreat in January, that with the pavilion coming online, that is, can be part of the programming. You could, you could have a regular monthly meeting of what's going on in Kenmore and any, anybody with any wild ideas, that same kind of enthusiasm could be generated there on a regular basis. And immediately after the, the event that we had with Peter here, there was, there was a lot of energy in this room and it continued on a lot longer than I thought it would and it's still going on with the mural and with the silos and painting those and so on, all these different things. But I think it could be part of our programming for the, for the, for the pavilion, as well as maybe some incubator kinds of stuff, ideas, business ideas that could be shared in a, in a group setting like that, in an informal setting.
And Nancy mentioned this a second ago, so the last question we really had for you tonight was, how do your priorities affect or what would they mean for your regional, state, federal legislative agenda? Nancy said something about having to gear up a little bit more, especially with Lake Point, but are there any other thoughts you have in terms of the impact of these priorities on those different agendas?
I don't know if they have any impact, but they certainly give us direction in a lot of areas, they certainly point to where our activities need to be focused. I mean, certainly with transportation and what we've talked about in the past, I mean, I think that's part of the reason that we've been so successful. We, as the council said, transportation and 522 was important to us and we went out and continued to work that until we got funding for it. So, I mean, the priorities and what we're seeing with, with, with Chris and, and that department with getting, obtaining grant funding for sidewalks. We have brought sidewalks up as, as one of our top five issues and as a result, we're starting to see funds come in to complete some of these sidewalk projects. So I certainly think that our priorities and agenda drive what we do on the, on the regional, state and federal level.
What is the timing that we have on legislative agenda? Should we, will be, need to be working on that this fall and do we now want to get that to our legislators prior, significantly prior to the session beginning so they can be working on it? And along those same lines, as Chair of ETP, we're working on our legislative agenda for this next legislative session and we really would like to have the transportation elements from individual cities to input into that. So our legislative agenda reflects what the East Side cities want as well, so the sooner we can get that together, I think it's a chain of, of effects, so. It all needs to get hands of the legislature probably, at least by December, beginning of December.
I certainly think we're on course to do that. I mean, there's some preliminary discussions that have been going on and certainly, you know, off-session is a good time to.
Sure.
To start laying some of that groundwork and I think some of that's starting to be done. I, I know that, that Nancy, you're developing this agenda, so I do anticipate it's going to be to us just after summer.
As soon as you come up with the, the transportation part of it, I'd like to have it for ETP if we could.
Sure.
As an initial.
Actually, we were thinking of at least discussing federal agenda even before the summer break, because we, we didn't adopt a new one this year, so I want to get some feedback from you before we go on break for the summer on, on the federal. And then county and state will follow soon after that, so early fall, look, look for that. But obviously, we've been doing a ton of work with Sound Transit, but I'm, I'm also wondering if we should, if not a formal agenda, at least be thinking around PSRC and, and continuing with other efforts that Sound Transit is doing, so just not to leave those important agencies out.
Right, I mean, PSRC and certainly TIB, I mean, there's a number of agencies that we should, should be working with, which we are. But I mean, that's one thing that, that I, I certainly am very, very pleased with is the effort that, that Chris has put forward in, in the transportation monies that we've been able to obtain. It's been really, really good to see some of these gaps go through. I mean, we had to try first, did we use some CBDG money over here on the sidewalk on 181st?
We did, and Laurie was the, threw the grind to get that money.
But I mean, that CDBG money took two years, right? We, we tried the first time and we didn't make it and we tried the second time and we got it. So, but that goes back to the federal lobbying that we've been doing for years is making sure that CDBG money is, has been funded, well, at least the, the Community Development Block Grant, funds have been allocated, right, and not reduced so significantly and they weren't there. And it's always been kind of funding me, that's one program that seems to be working nationwide and working quite well. And I, sometimes I think the answer to that is to cut the funding more, so. It's one of the things that we've been working hard to make, make sure the money, funding was maintained.
Yeah, that CBDG money was, has been cut and it's tighter, it's harder to get now than it was several years ago, but it's one of the issues that National League of Cities has really been, been working on to try to maintain that, so.
To cover every possible level of government, I'd like us to be doing more with the Port of Seattle. And they have recently instituted a new Economic Development Partnership Grant Program for the cities within the, within the Port of Seattle territory and so I'm going to be going to a workshop next week to see how we can get access to, to some of that money, which I understand is going to be allocated on a per capita basis.
Right.
But there are other things that they can partner with us on and so we're also in touch with the Public Ports Association about another project that's going on.
I know that we've got, I think there's some meetings scheduled here that the port has asked for with Rob and, and I, and I believe you.
Right.
And so we've also started with Sound Cities Association, we've had meetings and talks with the port and, and some of this economic development money that are going to start making available, available to cities, so it's good to see that this is, this is coming online.
So, do we have lobbying, I assume we do, in our priority-based budgeting as one of those 380 programs? Because somehow it feels to me like this is way more important than we actually give it credit for. It's like, it's sort of like how we do work, but it's not how all cities do work and it's been really effective for us. And it's sort of like, I don't remember seeing it on any goals where we specifically say we will work with regional players and national players to help get our work done. Because as a small city, there's just a lot of things, you know, whether it's flooding or whether it's transportation or a lot of other things, we just can't do it on our own. Without that cooperation with other entities, it wouldn't happen. So if we just sat around and said, well, we don't have money to do stuff, we'd be in big trouble. But we have a different attitude of we can play well with the neighbors and, and we will work and encourage others to join with us, to, to go to higher entities. So I think it's, I don't know, it just feels like it's more important than we've probably given, given it credit for.
Might also comment that any of you have seen Gordon Thomas Honeywell in action down in Olympia, Brianna, is it Taylor?
Yep.
Mary name?
Murray.
Murray. See her in action, she's amazing, amazing how she gets, advocates for our position and managed to get things done. And you just can't sit here and say, hey, we need money for 522 and just expect it to drop in your laps, you have to work for it. And David's down in Olympia all the time, talking to people and, and Brianna's doing the same thing and, and then with the grant applications and new folks on the staff working along the same lines, it, it does pay off. And you don't get it if you don't ask for it.
And you don't get it if you're not there.
And it isn't, it isn't just going down and coming back with a potful of money or going back to DC and coming back with, you know, millions of dollars for this or that, it's building relationships. And the number of times we went back and talked to the Corps of Engineers back in DC and the number of contacts with the Corps here in Seattle and San Francisco, you don't, you don't go down and come home with, with, with a check, but you come home with the relationships. And I noticed how over time, every time we went back, we'd see some of the same people each time and they'd call us by name when we walk in. And then when some money does become available, we get the phone call from them and say, hey, yes, we got $400,000 for you. And it wouldn't have been there had we not been back making these, working on these relationships. So, you know, people can, can complain about the amount of money we spend on airfare going to these meetings back in, in DC and the trips down to, to Olympia, but it all pays off and it's paid off for this city, I think, big time. So, thank you all for everything you do to support it all.
Any final thoughts, we're really kind of at the end of our business agenda, any thoughts about the retreat or any other issues you just want to quickly raise or anything that's like been kind of circulating in your mind about things you've already discussed that you just want to raise?
I ran into Todd Banks at Subway today at noon and he said he was going back to meet with the Secret Service.
I got news.
He got news, he was meeting with them this afternoon about Obama's visit on Thursday and he was hoping for some good news. Do you know what transpired?
They have worked with, the Secret Service was there today on premises and they've worked it out and they're going to probably be able to fly when he's here, so.
That's great.
You know, this, this is three or four years and we've.
That's an example of, of all the contacts we've made back in DC with various agencies over the years and Susan, our representative Del Benny going to bat for us back there.
And Inslee before that.
And Inslee before that, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, that's $70,000 a day they would lose, 50 to 70,000, so they're going to get to fly.
Great, good news.
I heard that today from Todd, he called me, so.
Okay, I think that's it, we're adjourned. We got done a little bit early, anyways. Yes, I will, yeah, in the next couple of days, I'll.